It is six thirty seven on Monday, August Tuesday, August twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen. And we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. Uh, our first item is our minutes from August sixth. Did anybody get a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Um, yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, edits, corrections?
None that I saw.
Additions?
Wait a second.
Nothing? Okay, so all in favor to approve the minutes, August sixth, two thousand eighteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Visitors' comments? No comments today? Alright. She's not even saying, she's uh, she's not even saying yes or no, she's just... Alright. Next time.
No news is good news then. We'll go with that, right?
Alrighty. So, jumping into new business, our first item is handbooks.
Uh, so the handbooks were placed in your folder for review. There were no changes to the elementary as they had combined on last year,
Yep.
uh, with the exception of any new staff that were added, so the procedures and policies in the handbook at the elementary school are the same.
Okay.
Um, the high school, I believe Steven is here to talk about, um, any changes that were made and any questions that you had,
Okay.
but for the most part, the changes were the result of discussions that we had already had, um, and so they are now embedded in the handbooks.
Okay.
So, Steven, did you wanna quickly give us?
Sure. So, there's just a couple things that we wanted to highlight. Um, I think if you remember back to last summer, there were extensive changes to the handbook. This year it's not so, not so much. Um, last year we had some behavior intervention things, personal electronics, the district curriculum accommodation plan. Those things all got added last summer, so there was a lot of work done last summer. Um, this year was more, we, we made some tweaks, but we did add some of the things that we talked about earlier in the year around program of studies, the family ID for parking and athletics. Um, those were two of the main things that got added. Um, a couple things that reworked on page fifty three, there's now a guest form for prom guests for out of, for people, for guests who don't attend Granby Public Schools. Um, we added that form to the handbook so students can see it. We also have, um, it sounds like it has been an unwritten rule, but we added it wi- in writing that, um, the oldest a guest could be would be twenty years old, so no guests over twenty years old. Um, it sounds like that's been the past practice for years, but we added that to the handbook in writing, so, um, that question came up a few times.
I was gonna say no more, no more nineteen eighties proms, you know, the thirty, twenty five year olds show.
We just randomly.
Yeah.
We just randomly selected that age.
We should have prom night on school.
Born.
Twenty, twenty seems a little, I don't know.
Sorry.
Old.
Is it me? Yeah, it seems a little old to me.
Yeah, I mean, some of our seniors are eighteen and some, I think a couple graduates are nineteen actually,
Yeah, it's exposed, yeah.
and it's more for the senior prom, the end of the year, they're, so, um.
What is the youngest age we accept for the proms now?
They have to be in high school.
Right, so they can be as young as fifteen then, right?
Fourteen. Fourteen, fifteen.
But this applies to the junior prom as well, right?
So, we only have the junior, senior, and then the cotillion is for grades nine through twelve. So, it applies to both.
Yeah.
Right, so, so somebody going to the junior prom could be as young as fifteen.
Yeah. Honestly, I, I, I'm, I'm personally fine with that. I mean, it's up to the families to make a decision, right, to whether it's right for them or not, but I'm, I'm good with that twenty, uh, limit. That's, that works for me. Well, yeah, I'm alright, 'cause Deanne, Deanne's up.
I just mean, I, I'm not saying that I'm gonna go against it.
I'm with Deanne, it feels a little, it feels a little old, but, yep.
That's all I'm saying, I'm making a statement.
Yeah, no, it's good.
When you think a senior could be, you know.
verbalizing a thought.
We don't allow that, Deanne.
Have a friend who's twenty, that's not so odd.
Apparently.
Um.
Yeah, it's a little heart, like, yeah, I get it.
And I didn't intend to segue, but the other thing that we updated was the alcohol, tobacco, drug use control policy. Um, there were some things that, I think the last time that we saw it had been revised was two thousand five, so we added some updates. We included, um, like vaping and e-cigarettes to the policy, um, and added, reworded the policy around specifically to tobacco, around the mass tra- the updated mass general law. Um, and we also plan to remove some of the definitions from the handbook. Um, you know, and I think I've said this here before, sometimes having those de- definitions makes us feel a little boxed in when something isn't as black and white as we'd always like it to be, so this allows us some discretion in places as well, and I know Ms. Jordan consulted with, um, Ms. Jenks and Officer White, um, specifically with, uh, in reference to these policies. So, those were updated, and those are on page, I believe, sixty, sixty-nine of, um, the handbook.
Did, did you change the, um, it could be me. Did you change the format of the table where we have these first offense and second offense and all this stuff?
I think sometimes it's just the formatting and the way that it gets sent out. Um, it wasn't intended to change the formatting. I saw that, I have approved it.
Okay.
Yeah.
But what, I mean, it's not, it's not bad, but it's just... And the reason why I'm asking is I'm always getting concerned about reading the rubric, uh, 'cause sometimes we don't see certain things and, you know, something happens and suddenly, okay, how did we not cover it in there? So, it looked fine to me, the way I read it, and th- that's one of the few things actually out of the seventy-six pages on the high school side that I, I looked at. Um, so if it's just a simple, uh...
Yeah, I think it's a formatting thing, and if it's in the same section, I'm thinking, I think, the paragraph above it says that, um, you know, that's a guide that's, we're gonna use our discretion, but it's not something that's set in stone.
Right, it's a flexibility.
Okay.
Um, so again, that there is some discretion depending on the severity of an incident, um, and whatnot.
Okay. Um, the first page on the little administrative part, can we add Jen, uh, part to us as well?
She's been added. She was added this morning. I don't know if you got the updated sheet.
Oh, she is? Okay.
I, I, you know, I got that, we, so I didn't put that in part yet.
Okay. No, we have the, uh, old version, I think.
Okay. So.
And can we add, uh, what do we call you, vice chair? Can we add the vice chair next to Deanne's name?
Vice chair. Vice chair. I didn't realize, do you have congratulations?
So, Jen, I don't know what else to say.
So, yeah, Jen was at, was added, um, and I can add the vice chair.
Okay, she won't be able to make it, but she has some edits or suggestions for the handbook that she was gonna be sending to you. You can just, uh, take a look at it. Are we voting on this tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So, you can ta- take a look at her edits. It may already be covered here, I don't know.
Right.
So, does that mean we can't vote on it? Or we're, we're still gonna vote on it?
Um, we, we need it, the school's opening.
Yeah.
I think we can vote on it, and then if the, we can bring the edits back and we can just amend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
If the committee chooses.
Some of the things that aren't left in red and stuff, will they show as?
They'll be, they'll be all turned to black after this. We just wanna, we highlight, that's how we wanted to highlight, so.
Okay. Alright, well, I, I, I was wondering if you wanted everybody to see those sections particularly or something.
Well, we, those are additions or edits that we wanted to make sure that were clear to the committee.
Aye. Okay. Sounds good. Alright, so is there a motion to approve the, well, let's approve them separately for, let's do the elementary first. Is there a motion to approve the elementary handbook, uh, for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion, any edit suggestions, comments?
All good? All good.
Okay, all in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year Granby High School handbook, is there a motion to approve as updated?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, edits?
The, the only, I mean, I'm gonna use it, so I'm gonna leave it to your judgment, but I just get concerned sometimes, and I understand why you're gonna remove the definitions, but sometimes you can box yourself in the opposite way by not having them, but in this case it makes sense, which I just wanna put that out there. We, we just wanna be careful.
Obviously, yeah. Appendix.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so that-
And some of those definitions are covered in the.
Yeah, no, no, I don't have a problem here, it's just, I just, I just don't wanna look at those in automatic. We rip them out every time,
Yeah.
'cause sometimes you, you need them for, for more clarity.
Yeah, and I think to your point, I think having the definitions in like the bullying section, we left those, I, I think, to your point, like we wouldn't want there to be any lack of clarity there.
Yeah, well, yeah, so I just saw one of the definitions was a lookout, and somebody might say, well, I didn't know I was a lookout. Well, if you had the definition, it might, it might be better.
Um, let me just check on one thing very quickly. So, I had a similar comment that whether or not sometimes not having some of those definitions is, uh, is hurting us, and as I was trying to see what we are saying on our definitions, definitions is still in the, uh, table of contents, it seems. So, we have, uh, page three reference, uh, de- something that says definitions, I think. Where did I find it? Hold on, let me just find it. So, that's for the bullying prevention and intervention plan, so it's separate other than, it's not the same thing as you were saying?
Yeah, the definitions that we had talked about were, um, related to the, um,
Speaking policy.
The alcohol, it's tobacco, drug use policy.
Okay, okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and I read through them. In this case, it would be a sense, I just wanna make sure we weren't just pulling them out of the plug every place we saw them,
Yeah.
because we didn't wanna get boxed in.
Yep, certainly understand, yeah.
Okay. So, any other? Alright, all in favor to approve the Granby High School, um, handbook as updated and amended, please say aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Steven.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna request that we take the agenda out of order while we have Nancy here,
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
um, so she can speak to the grant, because I believe that's all that we have tonight.
Who's the grant?
Does, do you have the other ones that are on there? The med administration policy?
Do you have multiple items?
Yes. I think-
I'm not sure if we're supposed to talk about that or what we do.
Yes, can you do both?
Yeah.
It, it should've said grant and, um, medication, uh, policy.
No, it's not in there, yeah.
So, the medication policy was in your folder, um, so I think we can speak to it, 'cause we do need that vote as well.
Yeah, medication, yes.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Okay, I, I can do the, I'll do the med administration policy first. So, um, the state has required now that all school nurse leaders slash managers attend a, um, medication, um, course through them, because they're having an extremely high number of med errors across the state in schools, whether it's nursing staff or school, um, staff who medications have been delegated to. So, they wanted, um, you know, the leaders to attend the meeting, which we did, and then part of that, they discussed what was required in terms of, um, beefing up the med policies, so that you're kind of ruling out and removing any areas of question of who's responsible for what and what those different roles look like. So, um, they had a sample of, of, a general sample of what they wanted on, um, the website, so I went through it and put together what we had and in- incorporated it into the sample policy that they have, because it includes everything that they are looking for. So, that's the sixteen-page document that you have. Um, it discusses, um, what's required in terms of, um, you know, paperwork for parents to be submitting, um, who we can delegate to and what that looks like, and the nurse at the end of the day is, is the last person to decide if they feel that the staff member that they're delegating to is competent to do that, um, and they can remove that right from that staff member at any time, depending on, um, you know, their judgment. So, um, again, we're, our goal is to making sure that the kids are getting their medication safely and having all those checks and balances in place, including reporting if there's a med error, so that we can making sure that we're taking care of that and appropriately handling it.
And this was, uh, collaborated with our school.
The school physician has reviewed it, he went through it as well. Um, he had like two, two small things that he wanted me to make corrections on, I made that, and he's all set to go with it.
Okay. Um, what do we have before this, for this subject?
The most recent policy I could find was very, um, chopped up and, um, not, not to the level that the state had wants, so.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm wondering if we have anything in our school policies related to some of these things. Do me?
We do in the handbook. It'll, it go over some of the things in terms of, you know, the parents need to provide a medication order and a parental consent, and then, um, you know, the container that the medication needs to be in and what we can accept. So, that's in there. Some of the other stuff is more related to nurses delegating medications for like field trips. So, if Johnny takes a medication for ADHD and they need to be given out on a field trip, and the nurse feels that that particular staff member can handle giving that medication to that student, there are steps in place to ensuring that they're being safe. So, part of that is the staff have to, um, go through the, um, sti- deep page approved, um, training, so they have to read through a PowerPoint, they have an exam, or an exam they have to complete afterwards and go through that process with the school nurse before she can agree that they are ready to be delegated to.
And what happens if that is not the case on a field trip?
We, um, so part of the medication order that we have and that parent consent, the back of it has a med administration plan of two people that pe- can be delegated to. If there isn't a staff member that can be delegated to and the nurse feels that at this point in time, no one is able to administer that, a nurse will go on a field trip. Some cases we have to, because, you know, you can't delegate certain things,
Can't delegate.
but if we're feeling at that point in time that staff are not able to, for whatever reason, a nurse will go on a trip. Or we can ask the parent, but we're, we're not gonna force a parent to go. If they're not able to go, they don't want to go, that's fine as well too, um, but we, we'll send a nurse.
So, going back to my question, I, so this is consistent with what we have elsewhere, right? Did we check for that?
It is, but it's more in-depth about.
Okay, alright, that's good.
Yes, yes. We just needed to beef it up and, and clear, cover all of our bases.
Cool. Okay. 'Cause I like the fact that this is new and it was, you know, checked and double-checked, but to make sure that it's not inconsistent with anything else that we have.
No, it pretty much is, it's just, it needs to be, yeah, underencased.
Okay, thank you. So, you need a vote on this?
Yes.
So, is there a motion to approve the medication administration policy and procedure? Is, did we see this before, or is this our first reading?
You could waive your first reading?
Right, so we can waive it.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so we'll call this the second reading then. We waived the first. Is there a motion to approve the medication administration policies and procedures?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Comments? All good? Okay. All in favor to approve, please say aye. Alright.
Aye.
Thank you, Nancy. You have the grant.
Yes. So, um, in the spring of this year, um, Dylan, uh, our P E teacher, who does, uh, middle school here at the high school, and myself, applied for a project here, grant. Um, the goal of it through the pro- um, through the project here is to address substance abuse, um, as in substance use, abuse education for students. Um, this particularly addresses the middle school population from grade six through eight. Um, so part of the grant is they had three different evidence-based health education programs that you could choose to see what would work for your district depending on the needs. Um, we have some pieces of that education in place, but it's not really comprehensive. Um, so part of it was you would apply for what, which curriculum you thought worked best for you. We looked at the Michigan model for health, um, and the grant would pay for the curriculum for the staff to use as well as, um, the cost to train staff and pay for substitutes, so the staff can attend that, um, those trainings for, um, health educators, school nurses, and guidance. So, um, we submitted that and we just found out last week that we have been awarded the grant. It's about forty-two hundred dollars.
Nice.
So, um, we checked the Michigan model, um, Dylan and I, it meets our frameworks, it meets the Massachusetts health frameworks, so we know that it'll work well with what we're trying to do, and it provides a more comprehensive, um, education for sixth through eighth grade. Um, the sixth grade will be dealt with a little bit differently, because they're next door, and they're, um, the program's not set up the way it is here, so, um, that will be more of a, a test drive, I guess you could say, for this year. And then seventh and eighth will get their programs, but it will be sequential, so it will be, be based off of what they've already previously learned for, um, particularly eighth grade, um.
So, this is through, um, phys ed?
Um, this is through health, through wellness.
Okay.
So, they each, um, they get a rotation of that during the school year, at different highs, depending on which student it is, so this will be included in the curriculum for what they're learning.
Okay. Do we have something similar for nine through twelve, or?
I'm not sure, I can't stick to that. I, um, I think we have some pieces in place, but for middle school, we're definitely lacking. I know that, um, Dylan has been using, like, the project here, we do, we have been talking to that, um, with the students last year and has showed it, and they've had discussions about it, but in terms of a more comprehensive program, we're still building on that. Especially with, you know, the vaping, the e-cigarettes, it kind of brings everything up to another level. So, we're constantly making modifications to address that.
Right. And that's partially the reason why I'm asking. Many of these grants seem to go to a level where, you know, it seems like a good idea to have it there because of the prevention value,
Mm.
but in terms of intervention value, because, you know, we're already seeing some of these things happening, doesn't seem like the grants are really getting into that as much.
For this one, again, it is just at middle school level, 'cause they're finding that this is the group that they're needing to try to catch before it escalates, because they have that knowledge base and an understanding of where it could go to if it's non-cop.
Okay.
Not, shouldn't say cop, but address at that age.
Okay.
And is Dylan teaching it in all three grades?
He'll be teaching it in seventh and eighth, and then, um, I will be teaching it next door with assistants from like Rebecca and nursing.
Okay.
You need a vote on this one too, or is this just information?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I just had a question.
Deanne, please.
Um, the grant we have for forty-two hundred dollars to pay for this, um, this talks about, uh, you know, being a multi-year thing. Um, how does that get funded next year? Do we, do we budget for that, or, or is it?
So, the- Uh, I'm sorry.
Would we budget for that for next year, or is it just a one-time start of class and it's built into the program that?
So, it should already be built into the program by the time it goes up, 'cause all the key staff are going to be trained to teach this, this curriculum, so let's say, um, next year Dylan can't, but it goes to nursing and we figure out a way of how to do it. There's more multi-staff training to be able to teach it, should it not be able to be carried through by one particular staff member? And they can have all their curriculum materials, so there shouldn't be a reason to have to go and buy it.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Cool. Um, so we approve the grant or program?
Program.
Which one? Program? Alright, so is there a motion to approv- is it called project here? Okay. Is there a motion to approve, uh, project here, uh, substance abuse curriculum?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. One second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Well, actually, you're here now, you can say it.
Oh, should I? Since I just walked in, I don't really, I'm not even clear what we're talking about, but, sure, why not?
Why not? Why not? Uh, um, any other questions, comments? This, okay. All in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are you going on this, abstaining? Okay. Jen abstained, Kathy.
I'll abstain since I- Just because I don't, I'm sure I would favor of it if everyone else abstained.
Well, you probably like it, yeah. It's a substance abuse program for, uh, sixth through eighth,
Oh, I think I-
and it is, uh, granted that we received, uh, to be able to bring the curriculum in, uh, train the trainer type of curriculum.
Oh.
So, it will be established. There you go.
I- I. She no longer-
It's unanimous.
I no longer abstain.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy, appreciate it. That's, that's great. I love the fact that we're getting all these nice grants.
Mm-hmm. No, that's awesome. Mm-hmm.
Alright, um, going up to grade six teacher? Okay.
Yes. Okay. Um, so, uh, the good news, the fantastic news is, um, we have actually enrolled at East Meadow thirty-nine new students, um, which is just fabulous news.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're so thrilled and excited. Um, we are working out the details, but, um, in general, it, uh, appears that we have twenty-seven resident enrolle- enrolle- enrollees, um, and eleven school choice. Um, and so, uh, what we were not anticipating, uh, was enrollment in grade six, because historically, uh, grade six is a grade, um, where we see a slight decline. Um, so when we budgeted, uh, for F Y eighteen, nineteen, uh, we had forty-eight students. Um, so we kept, uh, two teachers at that grade level, um, and since, um, August sixteenth, uh, we have fifty-three students, so we had six more students enroll in grade six, um, and those are all resident enrollees. Um, so, uh, we are asking, um, the school committee for approval of a grade six teacher. This would be a one-year-only position, um, because, uh, when we look at the numbers, um, it is just like grade two last year, an anomaly that we have all of these resident enrollees in grade six. Um, so, um, uh, the potential funding sources I did wanna go through, um, we have carryover in school choice, uh, which we could use and apply, uh, to the salary. Uh, we have the substitute line, this would be a long-term sub-position, um, and we also have Title II A, uh, grant, which would allow us to use a portion of Title II A as a class reduction size, uh, teacher, and, uh, that's what this is, is class reduction. Um, and then additionally, uh, it looks like we are gonna have some savings in the salary line, uh, overall. So, it, it appears that we would be able to use those funding sources, uh, to fund the teacher, uh, for the year.
Okay.
And can you just explain more about next year?
Right, so this grade, sixth grade will be in seventh grade, and our fifth grade coming up currently is, um, forty-six students. Uh, we are not accepting school choice, although we have applications for school choice in grade five. We're not accepting any of those at this point, um, and with forty-six, um, we could potentially take another four enrollees, um, resident enrollees between now and sixth, so we are, um, anticipating that we would not need the teacher long-term into the next school year.
So, and that, and that's kinda like my question, 'cause I'm looking at this and I see the third graders now, we're gonna have the problem again in a few years. So, I guess I get, I get concerned that in a couple years we'll be facing the same situation, or, or even next year, 'cause next year isn't that much lower than this year was when we initially started, and then it came up to the point where we need a third teacher, so I, I'm kinda wondering, do we, do we figure out how to, how to get a, a third sixth grade teacher in there, um, sooner rather than later? Is that my question? Because I look at this and it seems like when we hit third grade, there's a, there's a big spike that goes right up to pre-K,
Yeah.
that we're gonna, we're gonna need that more long-term at that point.
Right. So, as we talk about budget and planning for budget in December and January, we will be looking at enrollment and building that potential need for a teacher in fourth grade, because third grade is three, has three teachers in it. That class moving up is large, it's fifty-six students, that will most likely require the third teacher, so we would build that into the budget and then present that during the budget season. So, it's not an unanticipated expense, I guess is what I'm saying. We would budget for that moving forward. This is unanticipated. We did not budget for it, we didn't anticipate it, we didn't think that there would be six, sixth grade students enrolling. Um, it, it is, it's good news, um, but it is, uh, something to address. We didn't think that there would be six, sixth grade students enrolling. Um, it, it is, it's good news, um, but it is, uh, something to address.
And those are just Granby residents? They're not any school choice, correct?
Yes. Okay.
I guess, I guess that's my fear is people are still doing that and, you know.
Well, that's our other fear is that we are getting calls every day and getting enrollment every day still.
Well, this is kind of the nature of the teaching beast though.
Yes.
Right? I mean, this, this is very fluid. So, I mean, it's, we can't, there's only so much we can solve right now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, my other question is, I see last year fifty-seven students in grade six. And this year it's fifty-three students, but last year, how many teachers did we have?
We had three.
Okay.
So, we used that third teacher in second grade. So, we didn't hire.
Uh, right, 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 right.
We just, we were flexible and moved teachers where there's a need. So, that's what we do during budget season is ask those kinds of questions.
Okay. Yeah.
Can we be flexible? Can we, does it look like we might have some room to, you know, move a teacher to a different grade level to cover a high enrolled class? Or a high enrolled, uh, grade level. And that's what we did. And then low and behold, we ended up with enrollment and fifty-three students.
My other, and I wouldn't call it a concern, question, um, when you're hiring a long-term sub, I mean, what are the standards?
Right. So, we look for, uh, licensed, um, licensed teachers. Uh, so, we're not necessarily pulling out of the sub pool, but we'll post for, uh, a grade six, one-year-only position. So, it would be a licensed teacher.
And who, what would be, you know, the-
So, um, you will get, um, types of teachers that may be coming back to the profession, um, have maybe ta-
Retired teachers?
Yeah, maybe a retired teacher, um-
So, you're gonna get somebody with a wealth of experience?
Yes, yes. Yep. Typically, we get, um, about sixty applicants for every elementary. Actually, we get more. Sixty to a hundred applicants for every elementary position that we post. It's very competitive and Granby is very attractive at the elementary level.
So, so my other question is, um, has to do on the budget side. I don't want to get in trouble like we did last year. I guess the question is, when we get the budget from town, are, is the town voting that, that final dollar amount that we're kind of allowed to break it up the way we need to? Or is it the budget in each line item as it is, is what, is what is improved?
Your first assumption, which is they vote the bottom line and within that, we have flexibility and there's process for us to follow.
My first assumption.
That if we're moving line, if we're moving, um, money from one bucket to another, that school committee has some say in that. Um, but if we're within, let's say, a salary line, then we're okay.
So, we're, we're well within our rights to take one or some of those, those recommendations you gave us on, on how this can be funded?
Yes.
Okay. I just don't want to have another.
Yes.
Issue like last year.
And what do we do if we don't have some? I mean, school starts next week. So, I mean, how will it be based initially? Like, was there, is it just a regular sub until then or?
No, so, um, ju- so, just to be absolutely transparent, we posted an anticipated opening once we knew that we were at this number. Um, and so with that, it's anticipated opening, uh, pending funding and approval by school committee. Um, so, we have an applicant pool, um, and so now the process with approval tonight, we can move forward and conduct the interviews and, um, hopefully have someone in place if school committee approves by the, by the beginning of school. But if not, then yes, we will be going to a sub, uh, a substitute, you know, probably for the-
So, you'd break the class up into the third section?
Mm-hmm.
So, it would just be a sub? So, that could be kind of, uh, not a lot of fun for the kids in that class if we don't get someone right away?
Well, I'll say, we have fabulous subs.
Okay.
Um, we have subs at both, um, Granby Junior, Senior High School and the elementary that have been with us for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and some of them, uh, do per- prefer some of the longer, um, substitute, um, slots, if you will. So, they may look at that and say, no, I really want that. I want the kids. It could be a retired teacher. You know, it could be, uh, you know, someone who's been a paraprofessional.
Right.
And they, they, they understand they want the kids to have a good start to the school year and, and they'll take the job for that reason.
Okay. And, um-
So, but it's a, it's a good concern. We understand the concern. That's why we posted anticipated to try and get ahead. If we could, if it's approved, then we would be that much closer to being able to have a teacher in, for the kids, right?
Have you gotten applications already?
Yes.
What are the funding sources again?
So, we potentially have school choice, uh, which we had carryover from this year. Uh, we have the substitute line, um, and, uh, Title II A, which is a grant and a class size reduction. Um, and then also, uh, in general, the salary line, um, fluctuates. And depending on hires, um, and the new contract, how that all, um, plays out, there could be savings there in salary that could, could be, we could pull together and-
So, you're not sure yet?
Well, we haven't closed out this year. So, as soon as we do that, I will say, we're confident that within the budget, we can, we can, uh-
Make it work.
Make it work.
Can I ask what a typical salary would be for, like, is it, is there a difference between long-term sub and full-time position?
Yeah, so I-
Is it significant?
I think we should be careful with calling it a long-term sub or teacher, right? Because long-term subs, we get into benefits. They have benefits or not. So, this seems like it would be a full-time teacher.
Well, that's what we're saying, right? But we're calling it a long-term sub position, so there wouldn't be benefits, right? Because that's what you have. Isn't, isn't that what I read in here? A long-term? You have to step me straight because I'm still trying to figure it out. So-
Right. Nope.
That's what I heard too. Is it, is it a long-term sub? Is that what it is?
Yes. So, yes.
So, a long-term-
So, that means we're not paying, we're not paying benefits. Because that adds to the, that adds to the cost.
It's a one-year-
To the salary.
Right.
Yeah. And it's not that we are or aren't. I just want to make sure that if it's a long-term sub, we're, we're, the salary and benefits piece is gonna be obviously substantially lower than, uh-
Well, that's what we need to figure out, right?
Right, right.
Because if we're going with long-term sub, then there's no benefits. And then that's, I hate to say it this way, but it's less of a hit budget-wise because we're not paying the benefits. But if we're going for a long-term teacher, that goes to what Mike was talking about. You know, where we went back sort of afterwards, you know, when they were talking about the line. And I get that it's all within there.
Right.
But to me, it seems, you know, we have to kind of figure that part out.
So, so which is it? Because I still feel confused.
We posted as a long-term sub.
So, all those people that are applying would have the assumption then that there would be no benefits as a long-term sub?
Correct.
Okay.
So-
I mean, if we have someone that we love, can you offer additional money to pay for some part of benefits? I don't know how that works. I don't, I'm not sure.
So, I guess the question is, what, what qualifies you as a long-term sub, right? Because you have to go day to day and then at X amount of days, you qualify as a long-term sub.
Right. And then your pay goes up and-
And then your pay is prorated based on the teacher's, um, scale.
So, so just to be clear, this is a long-term sub position that was posted. The assumptions are that a long-term sub position has a lower salary base with no benefits. Is that a correct assumption or is that an incorrect assumption?
No. So, they, so, again, in this, for my peace of mind, if, if I'm thinking long-term sub, I'm thinking of, there was a teacher in that classroom. They're out on an extended leave and then we put a substitute in there. That would be a long-term sub. Then after the first thirty or sixty, ninety days, whatever it is, they then get a prorated teacher's salary. They're pretty much a teacher after an extended period of time with benefits and everything.
But it's, it, but it's still under the-
But they would start out as a sub.
And it's still a temporary position because after the year-
That person, the original teacher, would come back.
But that's not the case because this person is not a long-term sub. They're starting off the year-
Exactly. Right. That's why I want to s- it, to me, it sounds like it's a teacher. It's a full-time teacher in a, in a classroom. So, I just, like I said, I want to be careful budget-wise that if we say it's a long-term sub, there are different implications.
But can you do that? Can you do that by law? Hire a teacher, a teacher?
Mm-hmm.
And not pay benefits?
No, 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 no. Don't, don't misunderstand. If we hire as a teacher, they're a teacher. They, they are afforded the benefits.
But it doesn't sound like there's any way out of it anyway. Whether you hire it as a teacher, so this, I mean, can we just make it, uh,
A teacher?
A- as clear as we can. I mean, I, I can't. I'm asking you guys if you can help. So, if we hire a sub
Mm-hmm.
and that sub's gonna be in that classroom for an extended duration, which is a full school year.
Hundred eighty days, right?
Mm-hmm.
You're saying that after a certain point, they're gonna qualify to be, uh, a teacher, basically, a full-time teacher.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
At which time, we're gonna treat them as a teacher. They will have their salary as a teacher and they will have their benefits as a teacher.
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes.
So, either, whichever way we look at it, this person, given that will be there for an entire school year, will be a teacher.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
With benefits.
Mm-hmm.
So, now we're trying to understand whether or not going one way versus the other has any benefits from a budget perspective.
Yes.
It will.
Which one?
It will. A, a, a long-term sub would be less than hiring a teacher. Because say, we have a teacher that comes in with a master's in ten years' experience.
Okay, so that's why you're controlling and you do that.
That's where the cost is. If we have a long-term sub that comes in, once they reach that, again, the threshold for days, they're, they just transfer over to the first step on the teacher's scale, which is a bachelor's one or whatever it is.
Regardless of their qualification.
Yes, because they were a sub.
And they understand that as they're hired for a lo- so-
Well, we'd have to communicate, yeah.
But, but, no, but I mean, that, that's part of, so there's no assumption made that because they have the master's and ten years of experience that they would be able to see where our public, you know, the teachers make and they'd be, assume that I would be able to make X when really it's X minus five or whatever.
Right.
Okay. So, I think that that's what we would need to do then, right?
Right. So, the first level is still more advantageous than being a sub for the entire year at the sub grades that we have?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the sub rates are, but yeah.
Yes, yes, much, yes.
I mean, otherwise, why would somebody now start going?
Exactly, right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so that's, I guess that's what-
So, what is the threshold? We're not sure what it is. Is it ninety days, like, half the year or is we?
I, I will, I look.
We'd have to check, but I'm, I think it's ninety days.
Yes.
So, we, so, what I'm understanding is we're, we would go the long-term sub route.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, the first ninety days, they would be at that long-term sub rate. And then on day ninety-one till day one-eighty or one-eighty-five, depending upon where we land with snow days and blizzard bags and everything, would be at the step one teacher salary.
And prorated teachers out.
And prorated for the remainder of the year.
Of the year.
But don't they, but don't they get that kicked back from the beginning too? I thought I heard you say that it kicks in, goes back to day one.
Does that go back to day one?
They get, they get that difference. I don't think I said that.
Alright, that's how I interpret it too, is, alright, alright.
Okay, no, no, sorry. Alright, no, nope, nope.
Nope, that's good.
So, prorated only from day ninety-one and going forward or day sixty-one going forward, whatever that threshold is?
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a few questions. So, on your enrollment summary?
Yes.
I think. Nope, not enrollment summary. The, um, the file related to the grade six position?
Mm-hmm.
You are saying that our overall enrollment is up thirty-three students at East Meadow?
Right.
So, what is it thirty-nine that you mentioned?
So, if you recall, last year, there were fifty-seven students in grade six.
Okay.
So, that class graduated.
Yep.
So, the extra four students, um, we had to enroll, um, four more students to get to, to thirty-three. So, we had a large class leave. So, when we're comparing thirty-three from, we're comparing thirty-three additional students because, um, thirty, there were thirty-nine that we enrolled because fifty-seven students left and only, um,
So, are we saying that if we had hundred students at the end of the year last year, we have hundred and thirty-three students at, uh, East Meadow this year? Is that what we're saying?
Forty-six. I'm sorry, say it again.
Are we saying that we have a net increase of thirty-three students at that school?
We have a net increase, yes.
Okay.
Right. So, a hundred to a hundred and thirty-three or whatever. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that's good then.
So, thirty-nine increase, but-
Right. And I have to be honest with you. I had to call Bill and I'm like, why is that number not making sense? So, it's like-
It seems like, you know, you had thirty-nine new students, but the difference was six. So, the six made up for the difference and then thirty-three is net.
Yes.
Uh, is that what it is?
That is correct.
Okay, alright. And we don't have the numbers for the high school?
We don't, no.
Okay. When, when will we?
I can have those next, next meeting.
So-
Do we have a sense if it's up or down?
Yeah, I, I mean, we- Uh, we have a sense that it's flat at this point. We haven't had a mass exodus, um, so, uh, we do know that there are, um, some families that chose, um, uh, Pope Francis, uh, for, um,
Hockey.
Hockey, um, and were recruited for that. Um, and, uh, we have a typical, um, actually a lower number than usual, but, um, students choosing private schools, uh, which we understand. Um, uh, but very low numbers, uh, to our, uh, neighbor, um, McDuffie, uh, very few numbers out of the middle, out of the elementary school or the middle school going, so.
So, we're gonna have all those by next meetings?
We can have all those, yes, by next meeting.
Okay. Um, going back to the numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Grade one?
Mm-hmm.
Did we have three classes in grade one?
Yes.
So, we already had three?
Yes, that was the teacher. Yep, from the teacher.
So, that, that's why the, um, the twelve, fourteen extra, we're okay, twelve extra. So, we increased each class by four students and we're still okay. Do we have any, um, school choice waiting for grade six?
Um, that's a very good question. I did not ask. I asked about grade five because it's, um, a class size that we're monitoring.
So, here's a reason why I'm asking. If we're, if we're, if we are going to invest in a classroom that has fifty-three?
Yeah, fifty-three.
Fifty-three students.
It now has space.
It's gonna be what? Eighteen, eighteen, seventeen?
Seventeen, eighteen, yeah.
Which is, and we had this conversation before.
Yes.
Based on what I researched, uh, a couple of months ago when I was looking at enrollments and all that stuff across the state,
Mm-hmm.
that's a number that is very low in my mind for grade six.
Yes.
So, what we discussed and I think agreed to is, the reason why we want to really not break it, not say, we're not gonna consider splitting into three classes is because we don't know what the expectations are as far as class sizes and we would like to really investigate that. So, we may not really in the future consider twenty-five, like, extremely large class, for instance, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Because, I mean, when you look at across the state, that, you know, those numbers are really reasonable level of numbers for some districts. Some districts have, uh, smaller numbers to-
According to what, according to what though? Just because it's across the district, it doesn't mean that it's the right answer.
No, it does, it doesn't mean the right answer, but it's, uh, if everybody's making do with that, why are we going down to eighteen if everybody has twenty-five students in their classroom?
Because we're looking at twenty-seven, twenty-six. We're not looking at twenty-four, twenty-five.
We're looking at twenty-seven, two. That, that's a moot point. If we're good with, uh, twenty-five students, then I always ask why twenty-six is unacceptable if twenty-five was. Because we're actually okay with twenty-five at one point, right?
Were we?
Yeah, we, I mean, that's what you told me.
We were at the high, yeah, we were at the high end of accept.
But, but that's not my question. We managed with it because we had to, but-
But, but who are we to, I mean, that's exactly now, just, that's the, just of the conversation though.
Right.
I don't know who's gonna tell me that twenty-five is acceptable or not acceptable. We always go with the assumption that, hey, you know, we're gonna have, have it in the teams. What drives that? It may be the right number. I'm not, I'm not disputing that, but I don't know the opposite not to be true either. And we never get to the point where we understand really what the expectation should be or what the right, or, you know, uh, there's-
Mixture number, yeah.
Yeah, from a, from a research perspective, you know, you, you guys all know that there isn't really that much of a di- difference twenty to twenty-five, at least research says that, right? Um, Massachusetts has only one requirement that is kindergarten level. Twenty-five, you cannot exceed twenty-five at the kindergarten level. So, that always makes me wonder. There are some states that did a much better job than we did. They said, you know, you cannot have more than this number at, at each one of these levels. We don't have that. So, I'm not informed. I'm not really privy to any, uh, research or anything that says, this is good, this is not good. Twenty-five is good, twenty-six is not. Twenty is good, twenty-two is not. I don't know. And I would like to really get close to that understanding to be able to really have a meaningful conversation when these things come up. The other reason why I asked about the, uh, about, uh, school choice? At this point, I think we're getting to that level where school choice makes sense for grade six, at least in my mind.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So, if we have, you know, for instance, two extra students in each of those classrooms and we get to twenty, that really, you know, because those kids were, plus your question, those, those students will then next year come to the high school, seventh grade.
Yes.
They're gonna be better accommodated because of the variety of classes that they're gonna be going to. I think that makes sense
Yep.
if we do have school choice students, uh, waiting and still willing to come to.
Yep.
And I have a question about school choice. So, if we, say, if we have those six students, so we can put two in each of those classes, does that funding then get funneled toward this position or does it just come to the district? How does that, how does that work?
It comes to the district, yeah.
We don't see it until next year.
Okay, but it would still be able to, oh, so we wouldn't be able to use it at all?
You don't recognize it this year. You recognize, you, they would, it would be in our chapter seventy next, the following school year.
Okay.
So, the state's budgeting practice is very simplistic?
Uh-huh.
They look at your previous year and they assume that that's what they should be giving here, uh, chapter seventy on.
Got it, okay.
It goes based on October one en- enrollment.
Yeah.
Okay.
October one of this year.
And I, yeah, and I think, you know, to have a longer conversation is important, um, because there are so many variables that affect class size.
Mm-hmm.
And so when you look at the rural schools, um, research that, uh, came out of the state, and the fact that the rural schools and in Western Mass, um, particularly, um, in the Berkshires, where inherently because population is low, class size is low. Um, that is inherent in the context of not having enough kids growing up in the Berkshires to have large class size.
Mm-hmm.
That's not a decision necessarily, it's just a context. Um, and the other piece is particularly for middle school, the, the various ways that schools and districts are organized will impact class size.
Mm-hmm.
So for example, if you're a middle school that's six, seven, and eight, you can structure grade six much differently with a different number of staff because they're in a different schedule, they're not with one teacher, or maybe doing English, reading, and history with one teacher, and then transferring, um, and sharing with a grade six teacher math and science. Um, so if you're in a middle school versus an elementary structure, that's gonna impact decisions regarding how large class sizes are going to be, or whether class size is even applicable in considering, um, how you're staffing.
Right.
But I'm sort of like.
And that's why Ian's question is intriguing. There are so many variables and I ha- I have no idea what, you know, what it means to be in this structure versus that structure, what number is.
And those are, uh, Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, and we're having all these conversations and almost every year on top of our list was keep the classroom size reasonable. But that reasonable means nothing right now, because we've been having the same conversation over and over, over. I don't, I don't have any tangible thing that I can say, you know, this is probably close to it, let's not consider it, let's consider it, I don't, I don't have that, those tools.
So, so why are you recommending three teachers versus two?
So I'm recommending because we are in an elementary structure. Um, grade six is critical for kids, um, in terms of their math development and their reading comprehension. And so when you're talking about class sizes of twenty-seven, it's much more difficult to do small group intervention, differentiate for that large number, particularly where the, the content is critical for them to be successful in grade seven and grade eight. Um, so that's why I'm recommending the third teacher, um.
And, and sixth grade, they have MCAS, right?
Yes.
So that's another.
And we also switch though in sixth grade, don't we? Don't they, right, so we're sort of like a combination of the two forms you were talking about, so.
Right. We do, yep. So, but what we don't do, which would allow us a little more flexibility, is if you say you had a, an English teacher, a math teacher, a social studies teacher, and a science teacher, and they were a team, and then you could differentiate your instruction and you could group kids, um, and you could offer, let's say, um, pre-algebra in grade six. We don't, we can't do that because we're an elementary structure, so we have to work within the classroom to differentiate. When you have twenty-seven kids, that means I may be teaching, um, in math, for example, a level of student that might be at second or third grade with a student that may be ready for algebra. And so that becomes a real challenge, so with a smaller class size, and even some conversations around, with the teachers around, can I have this group of kids to really move them forward in this one content area? It just allows us a lot more flexibility, um, and an ability to really target kids.
And, you know, just, just for the record, I think twenty-seven is big.
Yep.
I, I think less than twenty-five is.
Is it, right.
You know, that's, that's.
Yep, it's a difficult number to work with.
Yeah, it should be less than twenty-five.
Yep.
Um.
But what are you basing that on?
I mean, that's basically my gut feeling, because I'm thinking about so many students who are gonna ask questions, who, who will want some, you know, answers, who will want some attention, who will want to get that interaction out of their classroom. In a year when they're gonna be learning a lot of stuff, they're gonna be taking MCAS, they're gonna have to really absorb a lot of, uh, higher level, uh, instruction.
Mm-hmm.
It seems to me that, uh, you know, I, I have, my class when I was growing up, and this is an argument that we hear sometimes, was, I think, thirty, thirty-five, maybe more. And just because we had it then, it doesn't mean that I had the best instruction in a classroom of, you know, thirty-five, uh, students, it wasn't the case, so. But, I mean, even that current single rule that we have in the state doesn't make sense to me, that having twenty-five students in one kindergarten class.
Right.
You know, when, you know, when they are really learning, absorbing all the, yeah.
Those are critical foundation, yep, yep.
So, but I, my, my challenge is, and, you know, I, this comes up all the time, is one, I don't know, I get, I get, uh, anxious and frustrated because I really don't have anything to, to, uh, hold on to, exactly, to say, well,
What?
some folks are doing it for these reasons, this school structure, it, it benefits them this way or it hurts them that way. I, we have, we seem to have no good researcher.
No, that's true, um, but we also have an opportunity to glean some research anecdotally ourselves. You know, because last year, how many students were in the, the sixth grade classes?
Uh, last year we were fifty-seven.
And then the year before that, and the year before that, and the year before that. I mean, we could easily look back at grades, right? Because that's our, our best indicator.
Right.
And, and we can go back five years, or six years, or however many years, and we could use this as, as our own little test situation.
That's a good, that's a good point.
And, and gather some data ourselves.
I think, um, one of the indicators that we look at is student growth percentiles from MCAS, um, and what that is, is it's a cohort of students that, um, once they score a certain level on MCAS, they are grouped together and then they, they're compared to how much growth they make over the next year. And so I think there you might be able to see, um, is there an impact in the fact that we have smaller class size with student growth percentiles? The research that's out there vary, there is not much, if any, that talks about class size impact on student growth or student performance.
So, so again, this.
So it's, it's, we're, like, to, to Emery's point, we are kind of on our gut, but, you know, Granby is, um, and I, and I said it in the letter to you, they are accustomed and appreciate, and when you survey parents, they, class size is important to them. Smaller class size, because what that feels like is my child's getting more attention.
Yeah, and, and, and so we have that.
And that's may not necessarily be true, but it's certainly the perception and something that we have to work with as, as students are encountering a lot more that they have to deal with, whether it's, um, bullying, social emotional learning, um, you know, stress, anxiety, all of those things, in addition to the standard content curriculum that, that we're teaching students.
So here's what I propose. I propose that we go with the third teacher under the condition that we are going to, um, gather research, and we're gonna con, and, and this is, you know, this is gonna require some work.
Yep.
But, you know, this school committee, we've always talked about being evidence-based and research, and that's really important, right?
Mm-hmm.
And we need data, so this would, this, I think, would be a perfect opportunity for us to come back at the end of the year and, and see how we do.
So.
See how we've done, and, and then at the end of the year, we can say, well, guess what, we have this information, we really didn't need that third teacher, because the data is indicating that the grades are the same, MCAS results are the same, you know, the indicator that you just stated is, you know, similar. But I would also like to make sure that we have, you know, I would, I'm hoping that there's some school choice kids that we can add to that group, so we can open up, you know, and any sixth grade spots, cause eighteen feels, eighteen feels small.
Cause, cause that feeds, that feeds high school next year.
Yeah.
So, so to that, um, I guess my question, or my original thing still is out there, like, what, what, what do we have for school choice for fourth and fifth grade going into next year? And should we be aggressively looking at and thinking about, um, keeping the third, sixth grade teacher and bumping, trying to bump up our numbers through some school choice maybe for those classes, cause they're really not that far behind what this one was anticipated to be? I guess it's a big mouthful, but.
Mm-hmm. I'm not so sure how we would bump up school choice numbers at this point. School's starting in five days.
For this year, yes, but I'm thinking we gotta start planning aggressively. Do we wanna open up more school choice slots for, um, what's gonna be, third grade's gonna move into fourth, but what's gonna be fifth and the sixth grade for next year? To possibly hold on to that sixth grade teacher, because when you look at this, when you hit third grade, there's no, there's no end in sight of, of those higher numbers. If, if that third grade, if, if that third, sixth grade teacher's required for that, for that number.
Do we have a deadline for school choice if somebody says, I'm still willing to come to Granby?
No. No deadline. So if we have a family that, you know, is interested, um, and in fact, we do have families that are interested, um, you know, at times, if there has been difficulty in another district, um, stu- parents and families will start to make the decision to, to look for school choice, and we do accept, um, mid-year.
Cause this may be the sweet spot that we talked about with finance committee, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Cause when you feel like it's the right thing to do to open that third, uh, class, but the numbers are such that you can add a couple more, uh, reasonably, and next year they're gonna be coming to the high school anyway, and at the high school, we're looking for similar type of increases in enrollment. Uh, it, it just, uh, I think it, it makes a lot of sense to s- if there are any, uh, folks.
Yes, and I will ask, right.
Okay. But I like, I like that suggestion that we should get to, to a point by the end of the year to see, you know, what this means to us, to our school district, what it is. And just to wrap it up, and again, based on our conversation, uh, we, we don't want to go to the town, uh, for this as an unanticipated expense. So, I'm, again, just to make sure, I'm looking at your numbers for grants. Title two A alone seems to have a decent amount of money for two thousand nineteen.
Mm-hmm.
So with the school choice, uh, fund that we have, or, uh, the.
Carryover.
Uh, carryover that we have, uh, and the, uh, sub-line, we should be in, uh, pretty good shape actually to be able to handle that cost. The only challenge is we just started to build that school choice revolving, and then we're gonna be, uh, expanding it somewhere, so that's the thing.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep.
Alright, so you wanna vote from us to approve this?
Yes.
Uh, so I, I would like to expand on how we're going to, um, how, how we're gonna, not pay for it, but how, how we're gonna gather our data and what specifically we're gonna do.
Pay for it. Oh, okay.
Cause I think that needs to be formalized. And I, and I would like to see some, maybe at a mid-year point or a quarter point, I, I'd like to see comparatively speaking, I don't think that we should just be doing it at the end of the year.
Yeah, and I think this aligns with what you mentioned during our conversation too, that we really, um, we do have, we do have an inclination that most folks in our town, especially in our school community, like the idea of having a smaller class size, but we, even then, we don't know what that means to them.
Right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
So it's a, it's a good idea to reach out and ask, maybe next time you come in, you just, you know, share some data with us, no?
Well, this is the year that got cut down from third to fourth, and we started placing a little bit of eight students in grade four. And we as parents, my son's actually in grade six, we have seen the side effects of that, so I'm rooting in for that third one, because there is a difference in classrooms. We have larger numbers, and just like you said, you have children that be challenged more, and you have children that need a little bit slower, and you have that many students in the classroom, it's difficult.
What are some of the things that you've seen, when?
You can see on the MCAS, I'm sure if you pulled it up, you can see lowers, um, kind of overscores like your parents who say that just walking in, just because you grade, you have more students, doesn't mean, even just the size, structure, the room walls didn't move.
Mm-hmm.
You just put a lot more kids in it, and that creates a lot of stimulation in the room, which I find could really affect certain students, having a higher stimulation. I know my son has a difficult time because he has to wait a long time to get called on, cause you're competing on a whole lot more students to get called on. And that causes people to call out more, kids are starting to call out, that creates behavioral problems. Waiting for your turn in gym class, for example, you know, I mean, it's just, you can go on and on about these little examples, and having a larger amount, but more so academically.
Yeah.
Seeing numbers change, and sometimes the program isn't accelerated, and you have children that are, they, they got seventy on the test, and they're still going. And they need that review, but they, I think, the program's still going, because the majority of the class was, got it, so a little bit more individual.
Yeah, and I think more demand is put on the student to get extra help, stay after school, and, you know, I'm not so sure that's fair all the time. Just because, you know, seventy-five percent of the students or seventy percent of the students, you know, get whatever concept is being taught, you know, leaving the other thirty percent to spend for themselves doesn't, you know, that doesn't seem right. And I know that my, my son in a larger class setting, that's exactly what he was faced with.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and we can't, we, we can't have it both ways, right? We can't have a conversation about, um, s- the type of instruction that will enable the students to get more involved, more engaged, ask the questions, get the answers, and interact more, and then have, you know, close to thirty students in one classroom.
And the dynamics of the groups also change. You can have one grade that has students that can hold up and have twenty-five or twenty-seven students in class, and it's okay. There could be another grade that's moving up, and they have a little bit more difficult situation, maybe children have different needs and have a difficult, a little bit tougher time with this. It's not just the numbers, it's who the kids are as children, or what they specifically need. You can have five children who have been diagnosed with this, or five children have did this, and this grade has more of this, um, you know, groups change, of course, and this and this as well.
That's true.
Can this group withstand a higher class size?
So I think that.
Well, and you're more likely, the larger the class size gets, the more likely you are to see those issues increase as well.
Yep.
I mean, we know that to be true, especially in two thousand eighteen, sure.
So, so to your point, I know that for a fact, the third grade class has an awful lot of kids that are born right before cutoff time, so they're a very young group.
Going from third to fourth was difficult at that time as well, because they're now, they were at the time entering the new school, and, you know, going into, they're already anxious and nervous about going into a new building and having a transition, so it was a transition year. Fortunately now, that isn't the case, they're gonna be in a building and they're just moving down the hall, so that's gonna, I think, help a little bit with that, but.
So then what would make sense for indicators? I mean, we don't wanna make this too complicated, but.
So my thought would be, um, if I came to the next meeting with a draft.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and some ideas around, um, organizing how we want to think about and research class size for Granby.
We need to have like some kind of a target in mind, because right now, you know, we're, like Emery said, we got twenty-five. Is twenty-six really make that much of a difference? Or are we uncomfortable with twenty-five as the high number and we want to adjust it? Because really, when you're talk, if you've got a class size of twenty-five as a general rule, and I don't know, but my daughter's class has had, has been pretty consistently twenty-four to twenty-five kids, so, you know, you're twenty-five, to me, I don't think twenty-six would make a difference. I mean, it would feel like a lot, but, you know, so we have to have what, what our target number is, because if we say twenty-five and now twenty-six is too many, or are we saying twenty-two is the ideal number, and therefore twenty-five, twenty-seven is absolutely too many? Like, how are we gonna frame it, so we know what, cause anytime you have that, if you, if you've got a range, and we've got twenty to twenty-five, I think is what Emery said, and I think I saw that somewhere, so we've got that as our range, twenty to twenty-five, and then if we're consistently at the twenty-five, well, is that, is that where people are unhappy? Is that too much for what people are expecting? Because that, it feels like it's too big, cause twenty-five to twenty-six really isn't that big of a jump. Yes, it's a lot of people, I get it, but where, where is that delineation? Like, how, how do you put the framework around it? Like, I feel like we need to have more of a ideal target so that we can base our, you know, is it eighteen to twenty-three only? Cause anything more than that feels too big, like how do, to me, eighteen feels too little, like how do you break up into groups and stuff? You know, it feels like, wow, that's, that's a small class.
Well, I think, you know, what is the school committee asking for? Do you want the research on class size? You know, do you wanna go through the research that's on class size? Do you wanna?
I think, yeah, we're going off in too many different directions here. What we're, what we're looking at right now, let's bring it back to what the request is,
Right, it's.
which is the grade six teacher, right? And we don't know beyond that what the ideal is yet.
Mm-hmm.
What we do know is that we have an opportunity to do some studying around what it's like to have seventeen, eighteen, eighteen in a class size. But it could be, end up being more than that, there's school choice, right? Because if there's. But we don't know that. I mean, right now, we know for sure that we have fifty-three.
But we don't know that, I mean, right now, we know for sure that we have fifty-three students enrolled, correct?
Okay.
Yes.
Right.
And if it goes up, I mean, it could go up to what, maybe twenty, twenty, twenty-one? I mean, how many more realistically are we gonna get in school choice between now and, it's not gonna be twenty students.
Well, it it's a combination, cause we're getting resident enrollment still.
So we don't have a final even number?
No.
And do we know?
And we won't, typically, we've, our our, it was probably mid-September before we feel confident that, okay, now moving forward, it's more like, somebody gets a job somewhere else and they're leaving, or or somebody's coming, and it's not this big, you know, it's not like four or five, it's maybe one, or, you know.
Well, that's that's what I'm saying, even if we got s- six more students, or, yeah, six more students, we're still looking at twenty, twenty, and nineteen. So we're still well below the range of what's too many.
Mm-hmm.
Right? We're still not, we're still within.
Right, no, I I hear you, yeah.
So, it seems as though, let's get back to what what we initially said, which is, do we want to fund the third teacher? And then decide from there, how can we go about studying, you know, what seems to be our sweet spot? Cause we know for sure that we have some lower numbers here that we can, we can look more more deeply into.
Over the, over the year.
I think we should, we should, the answer to your question, my answer to your question, would be yes, let's go ahead with it. So long as we're not gonna ask the town to fund that position, uh, then then we're good, and absolutely, and I I I hopefully, I'm not misunderstanding, but what you guys are saying, let's establish some some metrics now, so that we can potentially measure whatever success factors we're looking at. The challenge is because now we're breaking it into three, there's no control group that is twenty-seven, twenty-six, so we can't do anything about that.
Right.
But, you know, we can still get creative and measure whether or not this is the right model. The, if we can look into school choice, that would be great.
Mm.
In fact, school, if we have four school choices, the the position basically pays for itself practically, or close to it.
Close.
Yeah.
About half.
Yeah.
Half, you said?
Yeah, school choice.
Oh, it's school choice, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's true.
Only five thousand, okay.
Yeah. All right.
So then, having said that, getting back to providing a draft for the next school committee meeting, with these metrics, without making it over overly complicated, but, um, it's it's gonna give us enough information to make some assumptions.
I just think it's really challenging, because we're not researchers, we're not educational researchers, and there's nobody in education research that's doing this either. So, um, my concern is, okay, what are we, what is the outcome that you're looking for? Is it improved student achievement, is it more engagement, is it, um, less student, um, disruptions, therefore, how do you measure that? Is it, we don't have so many kids being sent to the main office, we, you know, researchers aren't, you, there isn't a, there isn't like a study I can go to and say, oh, we can maybe replicate that, we're, they're not looking at it.
I understand that, but it seems to be, we keep coming back to the same conversation for as long as I've been on the school committee, and I know Emery can can confirm that as well, right? That we don't know what the sweet spot is, so it seems to me like gathering some information is a great place to start.
And that and that was one of the things, I mean, I wasn't on the school committee until May, but in the, one of the meetings where we asked for additional money, that was the thing the finance committee just came, kept, you know, coming back at us for, well, how did you determine what the correct class size was? And, you know, why are we just taking school choice students, and all of those things that,
Mm-hmm.
you know, they were coming at us with, and then they mentioned in some of our joint meetings, so I think it, those, however we can find something to frame it around is gonna be.
And I also don't wanna.
And we may not be researchers, but, you know, we are, we are educated people that can can.
But, I think. I think, but there's so many variables here, um, sort of like, my concern would be, we are, we are responsible to parents and families, and I think we can exclude what they're looking for in the type of education setting, class size, the type of instructional rigor.
So is that where we get some of our data?
So do we get, you know, are we surveying parents?
Do we survey?
I think teachers would have, um, insight into how it, uh, how class size affects them, um, in being able to provide interventions,
Yeah.
social emotional learning, all of the additional, you know, pieces of high-quality instruction in classrooms in two thousand and eighteen, um.
Maybe that's part of the draft then.
That's what I'm saying, that, exactly, so, you know.
I mean, thinking about that. Right. Without making it too over overly complicated, because, you know, this, if we make it too overly complicated and time-consuming, then it's just gonna, it's gonna become too much of a chore. So I think, you know, what is the best indicator of grades? You know, uh, because there are a lot of indicators of grades, but you being an educator would know maybe what's the most effective indicator of grades to use in this draft that you're thinking of. What would be the most effective indicator for some of the, you know, maybe social emotional indicators? Not using all of them, but there must be like, you know, the creme de la creme that we can use as our guide to create this draft, and then we can, we can talk more about it, and I mean, I'm kind of excited about it, you know, like, there aren't a whole lot of studies out there, and and this, again, this could be, yeah, this could be a really good opportunity
They didn't put us on the map.
for us to gather some really important information and, um, have some really good conversations around it, and make some really effective assumptions. And we might be surprised, we might be surprised to learn that eighteen doesn't make a difference, you know, who knows, we don't know. Our working assumption right now is, you know, lower class sizes are the way to go.
I think I would be careful, I'm not saying that lower class sizes, I think appropriate class sizes. Um, you know, we are within what I consider appropriate class sizes in K through two, uh, which is, um, twenty, um, on, you know, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, or eighteen, nineteen, twenty, um, and then up into the twenty, over twenty, between twenty and twenty-five, and four, five, and six. I mean, I've been saying that for the three years that I've been here, so, I I think we need to be careful when we say we're trying to create low class size, and and rather, we're trying to fit within some expectations around of class size. At primary grades, and there's a reason for that, and then at the intermediate grades, there's a reason for that as well.
And then there's a difference once you get to the high school, right?
Mm-hmm. But again, that's contextual, because because Granby is Granby and has the class size, the grade level size, when you start peeling off and having AP coursework, or specialized coursework in fine arts, or in band, those classes are small, um, because we don't have a lot of students, so it sort of skews class size at the high school, um, and what we're able to do in terms of, you know, having students in, you know, reasonable class sizes. You know, some of the class sizes go up, because the teachers only have so many sections in their day that they can teach, and if two of them are taken up by smaller classes, then inevitably, some of the other classes get larger, so the context is is important.
So do we vote? Do we need to vote?
Yeah, so what I what I will do, I have some research, national research and stuff, I'll, you know, not that it's directly correlated with what we're trying to do. I'll just drop those in a folder, if anybody wants to take a look at those, then we can have that conversation. I mean, there's really no, um, broad consensus.
Correct.
Bu- and and, you know, some states, they have their limits, but when you look at what they are doing in reality, I think mid-twenties, they're trying to stick to mid-twenties regardless of what it is. Some states that do not have, you know, the funds like Mississippi and all that stuff, they, you know, their, uh, upper limit is thirty. I don't know that they are doing thirty, but that's their upper limit, and we're pretty close to Mississippi's upper limit, then, you know, that we should, we should be, uh, we should be concerned when, you know, there are so many students in one class. Um, with that, is there a motion to approve, what are we, what what should be approved?
Uh, grade six.
Long-term sub two.
No, but you, exactly, that's where I'm going with that, so we're approving this long-term sub, correct?
Should roll over to the full-time teacher.
On the website, it's posted as an elementary, or a middle school teacher. Unless it was an old post that. That's what I wanted to make sure.
So regardless of what it is, what if we said, that we would like to vote to approve, uh, grade six teacher?
Right.
For the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, one year.
One year only. I think that's what it's listed as, a one-year only.
So that, but then it's, but then it's a full salary with benefits from the, from day one?
Yes.
Correct.
It's on website?
It is, I I was, or the employment tab is.
It's. It's, uh.
I don't know, see.
For employees?
Oh, for employees, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right, yes. Employment opportunities, yeah. Yeah, so it's, uh, so it says elementary teacher, grade six.
Anticipated opening.
Uh.
Uh.
Elementary teacher, grade six.
It does not say that it's.
Does.
For one year, does it? Uh. I didn't see it.
That's the job description, the posting may be different in, um.
Kathy, do you know is the posting in?
Is it school spring?
Listens it as a one-year only.
Might be. Then definitely.
Yeah, because that's the job description, that's not the posting, so we'd have to go out to talent ed and finding.
We don't use school spring?
No, we use talented.
I'm just gonna see if I can pull it up.
Um. Well, that that does make a difference, if it's not posted as a.
Yeah.
A one-year position. I I mean, based on the conversation tonight.
Did you say talent ed, is that what you're using?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Correct, talent.
Yeah, I mean, t- technically, we don't have to, we don't have to say it's a one-year position, I mean, it's it's a vacant position, it's a vacant teaching position. Um, so, I, that that language wouldn't necessarily have to be in there, I just, again, I just wanna caution us on, is it a teacher, or is it a long-term sub?
We gotta look and see what it says.
Cause there's, there's budget implications.
And if it goes full-time teacher, then if we have a master's with ten years of experience, then that's not the step one with benefits, and then are we still going to have enough with all of those lines, because that brings the money up con-
Right.
I was almost gonna use really good English and say more considerably, but that's, we're just gonna let that go.
Yes. No, there. Budget implications would be, um, we would cover either with rollover salary or title two A.
Cause don't we, we also need to look for a paraprofessional too, right, to fill for Mr. Flowers?
That's already in the budget.
Okay. I can't get this to update, does anyone have a talented, um?
Yeah, I I.
It's funny, it's not letting me log in, which is not funny, but.
Don't have the posted as an anticipated opening for grade six elementary teacher.
Okay. So when we, when we interview them, we would, we would define it as one-year only.
And talent ed, uh, K twelve, uh, site with, for Granby, for that position, it says something like Department of Education licenses an elementary teacher highly qualified by the end of the two thousand six, two thousand seven school year. So there is something in there that probably didn't go through.
Right.
Proofreading or anything, I don't know, maybe this is not it. But it says two thousand.
Two thousand six.
Yeah. It says two thousand eighteen on one side, two thousand six, two thousand seven on the other side. But there is no indication that this is a one-year position, so how's, how does it work when people come in and?
So we tell them, it's a one-year, a one-year only position.
When you're screening them or whatever, just see, cause we don't wanna waste.
Yeah. Exactly. So we make them aware.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, getting back to the original point, that it's not a long-term sub position.
What is our salary rating?
Will have budget implications, based on this job.
I mean, either way, it would've had it, but yes, it, yes.
Right from day one, though?
Right, cause I mean, just looking.
As opposed to ninety days out?
Yes, I mean, just looking at the new salary schedule, and obviously, we're not gonna get somebody like that, but somebody with a master's forty-five, five, and eighteen years is making almost seventy-eight thousand dollars as a teacher.
So that's, that's where I'm asking, is that going to?
That's where, right, that's where we have to.
Does that then become unanticipated? No, we should have enough to cover someone to come in for seventy-eight thousand for the year.
As opposed to in the other scenario with the long-term sub?
It would be, you said a step one, so bachelor's, first year's experience, so what would that have been? Just out of curiosity, not that it matters at this level.
So it should not become unanticipated regardless, if it will, if there is a decision that it will become unanticipated, then we're not gonna do this before we go in front of the town.
More than a thousand.
That's a big difference, that is a big difference. And the first ninety days would've been at the sub level.
Because we, you know, we're not gonna do the same thing as last year, and then post a position, hire the, you know, teacher, and then go through the town, we're not gonna do that.
Which is a, a per diem, which is a per diem rate, I think it's like seventy bucks a year, right?
Not sure what that is.
Less than, right. I know I don't know what to do.
What what would the implication be to pull that that ad and get, get a corrected one out there?
As a long-term sub, as opposed to the teacher, it would just delay the hire.
Yeah.
Cause you said you've already received, um, applications, have you started to screen some of those people?
I'd have to talk to Bill.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure he has, but I haven't talked to Bill about where he is in the process.
From a financial point of view, let me, I just wanna be clear with what I'm saying. There's budget implications with having a long-term sub compared to an actual teacher. Regardless, I'm, we're going to find the money for this position, so it's not, it's not as we're not going to fund this position. We are gonna find the money, it's just how we posted it could be more than the other. But, w- we, we're in need of this position, we're gonna fund this position, um, there there is some, um, contingencies built in the budget, there's some sources that we can use, so we can fund it, I'm just saying, if it's a teacher, we're gonna get teacher candidates. If it's a long-term sub, we might be getting someone that's just starting out in their teaching career, there's gonna be a big gap in cost.
And it's not gonna be necessarily at the seventy-eight, it could be, there's a range in between, right?
I'm just saying, right.
So we're giving the high end, and then the low end was forty, around the forty mark after the ninety days, or whatever the threshold was.
Right. Right. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So you're saying there could potentially be a spread of of thirty-five thousand?
Well, there is no spread, it's gotta be the full, the.
I mean, from from what we thought of, the forty versus.
Roughly.
Yes.
But that's some, that's that's within your control, right?
Correct.
So, yeah.
Right.
I don't, I I don't think it makes sense to max it out, especially if this is not a long-term investment, right? We wanna look at the competencies of the individual, not necessarily whether or not they carry a diploma with them. And it doesn't always equate to, you know, being being the most engaged and most agreeable for this one-year, uh, position.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I would, I would absolutely not want to go to that max, I mean.
No, 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 and I'm just saying that that's.
No, I mean, getting close to it, I think there's, you know.
Right.
But I think we need to be careful in terms of employment, if people apply and they're qualified, we have to, we have to hire the best person, so, um.
We have, you have to, you have to hire the best, that, hire the best person.
Right. Right.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna be, I wouldn't wanna have my kid in the class as the wave.
You know, we gotta, you know, we wanna make sure that.
No, but I, I mean, you can hire, I don't think there's any business right now, that hires based on somebody's educational achievements.
But we can't discriminate, we cannot discriminate for. We can't discriminate for age, we can't discriminate for.
Right? Oh, we don't, we're not talking about discrimination.
Right, so we're, we're by.
We're talking about whether or not we're gonna be, you know, this is not discrimination, we just don't want to be going to the level where it's gonna be required that we pay in the seventies. It doesn't make any sense to me, especially for a one. Especially for a one-year engagement, but just because we're not maxing it out and go, not going to the seventies, it doesn't mean that we're not gonna get a well-qualified, good teacher. I mean, again, I, at least in my personal experience, we don't, we don't look at, we look at what this person can do.
Correct.
As we hire them.
Correct.
We don't just say, hey, you know what, this person spent, I don't know, twenty years, uh, in, in this top company, and therefore they must be good. Or they have this education background with a PhD, and that must be awesome. I mean, it's a, it's a combination of all those factors, right, just, you know, I, I'm assuming you have the leverage to be able to look at those.
It's a combination, right, yeah. Yeah. So back to the decision of, do we want to fund the position?
Well, now the, one of the options basically.
Is out.
Is out, right?
Right.
So it's just a, a one-year, and I want specifically a one-year position, right?
Yep.
So, do we need a motion?
Yeah, I mean, anybody can make a motion, so please.
I moved that we, I don't even know how to do it.
Does, what you said earlier, you were.
Uh. Move that we, um, fund, thank you, that's the word I was looking, yeah, fund a one-year sixth-grade position. Not a long-term, full-time teacher, yes? Okay. Not, not a long-term sub, just a full-time position.
Keep that out of motion, just, like, they fund a sixth-grade teaching position.
So someone has to second it.
Well, I, I do think the motion has to say that it's a one-year position.
Amend it? I think I said that, did I not say that?
Yeah, that's it.
No, I'm, I, I just wanna clarify with Kathy that you have that as a one-year position, okay?
Yes.
I'll second it.
All right, any more discussion, any questions?
I, I, I don't know, just feeling, probably didn't go about this the correct way.
What do you mean?
Just now it seems like it could potentially be a lot more expensive to appear, that is, is my, my biggest concern.
Right.
I mean, I'm all for the third teacher, I just have concerns about the way, I don't know.
Well, I think we can all, um, I'll, I'll speak for myself. That there is, there is a bit of risk here, right, with some backlash, I think that's pretty safe to, to, to say. And that's why I think it's really important that we, um, you know, we do have some metrics around this. You know, and, and that we do this very thoughtfully, um, so that we can, you know, gauge along the way, and at the end of this, you know. We have some clear summary that we present to the town, and whether it's we're justifying the position, or whether we say, you know. Maybe we need to, we need to look at this in more depth going forward, but, um, there is some risk involved.
I'm kind of, I'm just afraid that something else comes up, that we now have to go to the town for, if we don't have the money in the budget, that the backlash will be, well, had you gone through this.
Such as.
More effectively, you would've had the lower rate teacher, and then you would've still been able to absorb this other unanticipated thing, does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Cause I, I was just gonna ask the same thing, so if we have, is there anything else, I don't even know how to ask the question that's brewing in my head right now, but is there anything else that we can see coming down the pike? That.
Unanticipated, I mean, you don't, you can't.
No, no, but, I, I understand that, and I don't mean it to be such a blonde question, but.
Yeah, I know what you're trying to say.
But there has got to be things that we are on our radar, say we get five more kids that move in in grade five. Is this then, are we in the same situation again, where now we don't have the money, and we have to go back out, you know, like, and that grade five, like Mike was saying, that teacher's going to have to go with them, it's no longer a one-year position. So, that's the kinda stuff that I'm looking for, cause I'm still trying to absorb all of this.
Right.
So, how, we, you know, I know unanticipated, I get that, but is, is there something else that you guys are out there, like you just, you had mentioned probably a half hour ago about monitoring grade five? Is there a legitimate concern that we could be back here at our next meeting, talking about having to do this for grade five, or is there something else that's, is lurking? That we're now going to not be able to do, I mean, and I, I, we're part, partly put in the cart before the horse, because we don't know what we're gonna end up at a salary position, but we have to sort of plan worst-case scenario, right? Like, the max would be this, and, you know, it's gonna fall somewhere, somewhere within that, but those are my, my last qualms. And for the record, I am a hundred percent forth, cause I wouldn't want my kid to be in the twenty-six or twenty-seven, you know, I get that, but I feel like you have to kinda, we're looking at both sides of the coin now.
Well, I, I'm gonna take it a step further and say that, um, I'm willing to take the risk, because my gut tells me that twenty-seven, twenty-six is not acceptable and not appropriate. So I'm willing to take the risk now, as long as, again, we, we're doing it thoughtfully, and, and we're, you know, gathering information, and, and at the end of all of this, and, and, um, I'm willing to take the risk.
So, so I just, I just wanna be on record here saying, I'm in agreement with the third teacher, right, I.
Yeah.
I, I just am concerned about the, the way that now it's potentially almost twice what we originally thought it might be, and again, it might not get to that, but we still have that potential there, that, that's the piece.
We're still in the same position, though, we can't, we don't know what the unanticipated situations, we, we've been doing this long enough to know that, we have no idea what's gonna come down the pike next week, three months from now, five months from now.
But I don't think we're gonna go, I mean, you, you know, let's just then jump ahead a little bit, I don't think we have to go to next week, there are, uh, you know, several items that you will probably share under that budget line.
Yes, yep. Right.
That is coming, and they were not anticipated, they were not part of our budget, and that's part of the reason why I'm, you know, I'm, now that we said, no, it's not gonna be a long-term sub now, it could be double, double what we, uh, thought. Then my mind immediately goes to, okay, well, you know, that could cover two of the unanticipated items that you, you men, you mentioned.
Mm.
I mean, the extra amount.
Right. Right.
Otherwise, if it's a controlled amount, I'm good with that third position, it makes sense for the reasons that Diane mentioned, um, you know, for, even if we're going with, with our own. Uh, expectations, the twenty-seven seems high. But then on the other side, if it's gonna go on the salary scale all the way to the top potentially, and there is no safeguard around that, then we have to really discuss this in the context of all those unanticipated, uh, items that are coming our way, that we know of.
Yeah.
So there are things that are lurking.
Right, so every, so in working with, um, the town administrator, um, the first year I was here, uh, I worked with Carol to, um, use what was within our budget and revolving accounts. To, um, pay for unanticipated expenses our first year. So it was school choice, it was, um, carryover for school choice, it was carryover for circuit breaker, um, there were a few other pieces, tuition that, that didn't get paid, that we then paid a tuition for. Last year, in working with Chris, his recommendation was, when there were unanticipated expenses, bring that to the town in a warrant, and have the town decide and vote on. Extra expenditures to the school department for unanticipated expenses, because at the time, there was no budget in line for it. So this year, we're doing the same, um, I don't have that document here, um, but there are several, uh, tuition items, which include transportation. Um, so there are a few of those, uh, that we're gonna work with Chris, um, and bring to the school committee, obviously. Um, mostly, I believe all of them at this point were special education.
Yeah, I mean, ninety-nine percent of unanticipated costs are special education related.
Um, or pupil services related to thirty-seven each and a half, which is students that, um, are under a felony, uh, charge and working through the court system.
Yeah. Right.
And as a result of that, uh, may be requiring a tuition, um, out of district, um, while that process is moving forward. And that's not something that we could ex, could anticipate, um, we anticipate that the student is going to return, um, and is not returning, so therefore needs a different placement.
Yeah.
So there are.
I think the challenge is that the, the exact numbers are not known at this point for a tuition and stuff, so we can't give it, but again, just, you know, since you, you raised it, I think it's only fair to, that is part of the conversation.
Correct. Yeah, it, it's a, right, and it's, it's a process now that we're use, that we do with Chris to sort of say, okay.
Yeah. Right.
And, and I think from Chris's perspective, and I don't wanna speak for him, so maybe if he's watching, um, he can enlighten us all, but I think it's the process that he's using with all of the departments. Is that if there's an unanticipated expense, it goes into this octi, late September, early October, um, warrant under unanticipated.
So he, here's, here's the thing about that. I understand that's part of the process and one of the tools available to us.
Mm-hmm.
You know, this is unanticipated, and we're gonna go to the town. Doesn't mean that we have to do that each time we have an unanticipated, uh, expense.
Right.
It has a couple of ramifications at the very least, one is, then, do we really not have anything, and this year, we know that, I mean, it's unfortunate that all that came in this year when we were just starting to build some revolving funds. But if that's available, at least that should be a consideration. Number two, the other concern is that we can't just make it look like we're going in front of the town every year and asking for.
Right.
Cause unanticipated, if it happens every year, it's really an ant, an anticipated, unanticipated, right, just because special education, there is no way, the state basically dropped everything, they don't care anymore. Uh, and these numbers are growing and growing, and, you know, and we're not even one of the, one of the districts that has, uh, that has the largest percentage of special education, uh, students.
No, we're actually under.
We're actually under the state average.
Mm-hmm.
Even then, if we're feeling this, you know, but that aside, I, it doesn't, it, we should look at what's available to us in our revolving funds, and what, you know, we're building.
Mm, mm-hmm. We agree.
And, and avoid really, uh, going to the town, uh, for anything that is unanticipated, even though I, I do understand, and I do know that Chris mentioned that that was one of the options available to us.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Doesn't mean that we should always really use that option, uh, when we don't have.
Because, some of those unanticipated ones that we're putting up in front of the town are ones we don't have a choice for anyway, so even if the town votes them now, votes them down, the, no vote means nothing, because we still have to pay.
Right.
So I find those ones, as a voter, I find it a little bit insulting, like, we, we know we need to find the money, so it has to happen, so that, why are we voting about, you know?
No, we have to go to the town, because appropriation has to go through the town.
Right, no, I know, but I just, it's.
So.
So, so just.
I just hear the. I can't.
I was just saying, just, just closure to my, my concern, um, would be, uh, can we just make sure, I know there's a lot of, there's more moving pieces than I can appreciate to all of this, right? And I don't want this to sound negative or anything anyway, I just wanna make sure that, um, we have breaks and controls in place, so that the next time we're in a situation, these ads go out the way we want them to go out.
Mm-hmm.
That benefit us better than the way this ad went out, I think that's my biggest concern about, about this going.
Yep. Yep, yeah, it was a misc, miscue on our part.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, um, hopefully, we are capturing all these and make it part of our lessons learned thing.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure that the ad went out even the way you, uh, mentioned, or you wanted.
Mm-hmm.
Cause there is no mention of long-term sub, there is no mention of one-year, there is no mention of, of any of those things, that really took a long time for us to discuss, and turns out it was all, all unnecessary.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, it doesn't sound as though it was an error or an omission, it sounds more as though there needed to be more discussion around it, because of the budgetary implications. And, and maybe it was just a matter of, um, not knowing the implications before the job was posted, that's what it sounds more like, you know, that it just needed more extensive, um, conversations. Yep. Cause like Emery said, look at how long it took us to get to it, so. Right, 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 right.
So we have a motion on the table, right?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Was it seconded?
It was seconded, Diane, you seconded?
I think I seconded.
Okay, okay, any more?
No, that was it, I'm sorry, I don't have it.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, SOAR?
So, um, we've been going back and forth with SOAR on the contract, um, I think it's been updated now to everyone's, um, approval.
Okay.
Um, I don't, do we have a SOAR contract? I think it might've been under the last.
The last meeting?
The last meeting.
Okay.
Um. So it's not in the last meeting.
Talked about it, but.
So SOAR came, um, and met with Bill, uh, regarding the new building, um, and where, uh, SOAR would be held. That was gonna come on. Um, we made changes to the contract, uh, for, um, who was collecting the fees, um, so that was added to the contract, and, um, I apologize, we may not have gotten it back from SOAR yet to put in the folder for your review.
And what does SOAR stand for again?
S- oh, boy, uh.
I can't hold it, sorry.
Uh, well, it's a program from CES, our partner school, um, it works, um, after-school, providing, um, enrichment for students, uh, in content. Um, but also enrichment in, um, extra things like cooking and technology and, um, student-driven. That's a really good question, I was hoping I would be able to come up with it, but I can't, I don't know what SOAR stands for.
Yeah. I'm thinking, we were gonna, yeah, just for the cameras.
It was, it was on the original files, I've known it a couple of years ago, and I can remember what it, but.
Academic. Mm, I'm not gonna remember it, but it is our after-school program at the elementary school, um. So we'll, we'll have something to vote on.
Next, next time?
Next, next time, is that what you're saying? Yes. Okay.
Nancy, what?
Now, do their sh, do they share their enrollment numbers with us?
Yes.
Okay, and do we know what those enrollment numbers look like?
Yep. Um, well, they, in the contract, I believe there's a stipend for, uh, I mean, a stipulation for how many students that they have to have in the program, I believe it's around twenty for every enrollment cycle. Um, and if they go below that, they're not sustainable, um, and so there's some language in the contract about, uh, that, but it can be a different twenty students, it doesn't necessarily mean that the student starts in September and ends in June, there are periods that they can enroll.
And I know last year, beginning of last year, there was some concern around a couple of those cycles.
It was, and we almost didn't have the program, because we didn't have the enrollment, um, particularly at the end of the year before, um, the enrollment had declined and dropped off, um, but then it picked up last year.
In the contract, if, if people have paid for that and, uh.
They get reimbursed.
Planned for it, how do, how does that work?
Um, there's language around notification periods, um, and refunds.
Okay. I, I just wanna make sure, because I, you know, as a parent, I can see myself starting to have a panic attack like now I do.
Yeah. Yeah. Mm, yeah. Yeah, because, I mean, truthfully, there are parents that are using it as after-school care. And rightfully so, they need notification so that they can make other arrangements.
Some of the stuff that we discussed last time, there, have they been addressed?
Yes, they have been in the contracts.
Okay.
Um, and the conversation today, actually, or yesterday, I believe, yesterday or today, um. Today being Tuesday, and a school committee meeting has thrown me completely for a loop, I just totally messed up.
Yes. I just, I'm just getting a call saying, where are you, because I did not mention that there is a school committee meeting on Tuesday, so.
Where are you? Yeah, exactly, um, so, uh, yeah, I, I know we went back and forth with the contract language, um, but.
So do you think where we are will be, is the point where it is also, uh, acceptable by the families who have, you know, had concerns with, in the past, with the cost and all that stuff?
Yes, yes, um, right now, it's very viable, uh, they have enrollment.
How about the time, you know, some folks were in and out, or some wanted all?
Right, so they're, they're actually hoping that having it in one building may actually increase enrollment, um, because they found that they were not able to get as many students, so they're hoping that being in one building, they'll see, um, increased enrollment.
Okay. Okay, do you need any vote or anything for SOAR?
Um, well, you don't have the contract per se, so I think.
No, you don't. And I couldn't find it in the previous one either, so.
Yeah, it's not, I didn't see it, so.
But that's not gonna impact.
They don't start until later, but, um, the other pieces, uh, yeah, we'll just wait.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Okay, all right, so moving to old business, food service contract?
So, you signed that three weeks ago.
Yeah. Yep.
I forwarded to Chartwell's for their initial review, but the state has to approve the language in the contract, Food Service Division.
Okay.
And then they sent us a letter saying they approve it, and then Chartwell's will sign off on the contract, so we're just waiting for that letter back from the state saying it, but it's all their language, so.
Okay. The state? So what happens in school starting next week?
Yeah, that's not gonna impact anything, right?
Day, it's, no, 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 business, business as usual.
They're working, they have lunch. Okay.
Well, business as usual, but if somebody says, you know what, we're not really happy with this. Well, business as usual, but if somebody says, you know what, we're not really happy with this line or that line, that one.
Yes, so, so in talking to Mike Edgar, who's the above Ken LaPage, um the same kind of situation happened in East Hampton, I guess, a couple of years ago. Um and it's the state's language that's in the contract, right? So they wouldn't, they wouldn't have any objection to dates or amounts or anything like that, that's in regards to what we agreed upon with Chartwell's. Um but they're just making sure that there's certain boilerplate language in there that protects Chartwell's. And I've reviewed the East Hampton contract that Chartwell's has to ours. Now, aside from the fees and other things, everything is essentially the same.
Uh.
Um so there should be no kickback from the state.
We've never had an issue in the past that I recall an issue coming to our attention, so.
Right. Right.
Well, because we changed a couple of items there.
Yeah, but n- but that was, that's between us and and Chartwell's. Yes, yes. It does, no, no, nope.
Chartwell's, okay, it doesn't involve states. Were we able to find out, and this is my last one on this, um how they reconcile two different languages and two items? One saying that they're gonna have a profit of, what is it, twenty some, twenty, whatever it is.
Twenty-six hundred dollars.
But the fees.
And then um s- uh another item, they're talking about potential loss and they will only uh take it up to their management fee. How does that, how does that reconcile?
Um so when I talked to Ken LaPage about the, I I wouldn't say your concerns regarding the guarantee and profit, um I think he shared similar questions in how they came to that number two.
Okay.
It it's all projections on their part, right? They're they're projecting that they're going to have enrollment based on the numbers that we provided them, the amount of lunches that they're gonna serve. So again, for them to guarantee that number, I think is is very um.
Questionable?
I I wouldn't say questionable, but it, they're pr- it's projecting, projection-based. Um yeah, a- and I and I
Bold. Yeah, I like that word.
I've been saying this the last couple of meetings.
I almost said another one, but I didn't think it was appropriate.
With me in the position full-time and having that direct oversight on them, um I will hold them accountable and I will remind them that, you know, this is the number that you guys guaranteed to us. What will you be doing um to, you know, to get us that return? Cause we know the deficit that we've been in with food service the last few years, and it it won't happen again, so um.
Do they determine the price of lunch, or do we?
No, we do.
Yep, yep, we do. We do. And again, though, it's enrollment-based, right? And that's why we changed the wording in the contract to say at
Yeah, same, we'll have something moved to it.
As of now, it's six hundred seventy-five students, but if that number goes up or down, then obviously other numbers go go up or down.
Well, hopefully that number goes up.
Up, yes, exactly. I'm I'm just, yes. But it doesn't limit them to, oh no, we only said six hundred seventy-five and that's what we're going on. No, we have the flexibility that when that number goes up, then
Yeah.
hopefully we'll see increased revenues with that. And I've reached out to them. Um during our retreat, we talked about serving lunches on half-days.
Right.
Serving lunches on field trips to, you know, help them, you know, generate some more revenue and, you know, get the the account back to where it's not always in the negative.
So when you think about it, if we are just serving ones to to help revenue generation, that doesn't make sense to me.
Mm. Right.
Then it should be part of the contract conversation and they should be, that should be covered as well.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
That we're gonna have so many anticipated half-days or, you know, field trips and all that stuff.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um okay, so so we're gonna hold you accountable, you're gonna hold them accountable.
Yes, yes, yes.
Everyone's accountable.
Alright. Anything else, somebody?
No.
Um the Immaculate Heart of Mary contract for next year, for this year.
So I'll just cover both that and GAA. Um the only thing really that we were looking for was the rate changes for custodians, and they're still operating on a contract that's two or three years old. Um and on both of those contracts, it says that these rates might change if custodians ever settle on contract. So those are good. Um actually, I gave them back to Kathy this morning. They're good. Um GAA will be operating out of um East Meadow, according to Bill.
Okay.
Um I know that was a question a couple of meetings ago, whether they, we would be letting them use those facilities or
Yeah.
Um he will be letting them use the facilities, but I think he's gonna have them under, you know, lock and key, so.
Why don't, why don't we use the high school?
So um the high school during the winter season indoor just gets overscheduled, um between all, yeah, it
Okay, so because of school?
We really need that second gym um to work all of the practices and games of all of this, the, all of the sports, so.
Okay. And um, you know, in a very, uh, we have a brand-new building with brand-new floor, uh, will everybody care uh the same way? And or or are we gonna have all these scratches and awfully?
Uh. So it's something that Bill's been working with, um I think, uh, the community as well. Um it is a culture piece. Um you know, it's no food, that means no Dunkin' Donuts, no iced coffees, no, none of that can be in the gym. It shouldn't even be in the building. Um and other pieces like um making sure that someone's at the door, allowing people in. We're not gonna be leaving the doors unlocked like they have been in the past. Um setting the expectation for coaches that, you know, once practice starts, um if you're not gonna have someone at the door, then have your cell phone on so you can be available by text to let somebody in if they're late. Um there are a lot of safety and security things that um unfortunately have been lax because of the, you know, nature of the buildings and how we use the buildings that um in addition to protecting the building, we're protecting the safety of everybody inside. So um meeting with coaches, uh meeting with our own coaches, GAA, um custodians, and and really getting everybody on board for a different way to use the building. Um that is exactly what you're speaking to, wiping your shoes when you go in, making sure that we're not coming in and propping open the back door because we can track sand and grit and dirt in through that door because there's no mat. Uh that's not where we come in. We come in, you know, front door, someone greets you, you're, you know, then allowed into the gym.
Okay.
There's there, it will be a change for the community, and I do hope the community understands why we're doing it. Um it's not to be difficult. It is to protect the building, it's to protect the people in the building, and to reestablish safety uh um and the building's security.
Alright. Um th- is anything needed other than signing the contract for Immaculate Heart of Mary? I don't know that I have the other contract here.
The other one is a a letter goes out for children's uh.
It's, say it again?
GAA.
It will be later, is that what you said?
No, no. The contract is okay. The GAA contract, it has all the rates and stuff like Abby said.
Okay.
But there's a cover letter that goes out with it.
Okay.
And that's, Cheryl signs a cover, a cover letter.
Okay. So we already signed the GAA, or were we not signed?
There's nothing on there to sign, it's of the cover letter.
This is GAA.
Okay. Alright. I thought we signed the GAA contract every year.
No, 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 we just made a cover letter to be signed.
I mean, I I remember reviewing it and making changes to it even last year.
If. Yeah, we made changes to it, but we, there is nothing like on Immaculate Heart of Mary. There's no sign up for each member.
Well, actually, there is a, there is.
I can think of I've signed it in the past.
If you want, I can do that.
But this one, this is what I'm saying, this one has signatures from each member and GAA doesn't?
GAA has.
Right. I c- I can do it, I can.
This is the GAA.
So in fact, it's every, every member.
Yeah, yes, the members. This is GAA.
And that's, that's.
Which is different than Immaculate.
This is Immaculate Heart.
If you want, I can pull it up. It's what, they'll have all the signatures that you want from GAA.
Okay. Um.
So yeah, why would that be different?
Right.
Which is interesting.
We can change that for GAA if you want the signatures for all of the members, like the Immaculate Heart of Mary.
Yeah.
It, they were probably just generated at different times.
Possible. I don't remember what the language was on GAA right now because I don't have a copy, but um one of the reasons why we were reviewing and signing these, the first paragraph refers to the school committee as the party to this contract. So as such, the school committee should be signing off on it.
Yep.
Right?
Yep. Yep. Unless you were giving me, remember, we were giving me permission to, and so I think in the past, that's probably how it was happening, which is why Kathy would just be doing a cover letter.
Yes, yeah. Thank you.
Um so.
It just has a W A dot.
Yeah, so the school committee liaison would be you, is that?
I think in the past, it probably has been, because you were giving me authority over the summer to sign contracts.
Okay.
Um and this year, we didn't do that.
So does GAA, I don't remember, are they allowed to do games in there or practices only?
Both.
Both. So for the other towns, it's, that come in for games, that will be?
The same expectation.
Yeah, no, just that, that'll be difficult to have, make sure.
Yep.
Uh uh, um maybe this is just, the town of Granby is a landlord for the schools?
Wh- where do you see that? In uh which, which contract?
Immaculate, Immaculate Heart of Mary on top of, uh, right above the uh signature lines.
Oh yeah, I see that. It's in bold type, right, right above.
Yeah.
The signatures.
Town of Granby, well. Town of Granby has caused these presents to be signed, yeah, well.
Like right where your fingers touched.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I can see that, uh, I just.
Well, it does go into uh facilities revolving. The gift.
But it doesn't make them the landlord. That's why, I mean, otherwise, if they're the landlord, then they wouldn't give the permission, they would have to.
They would send, they would send.
Yeah, actually, the contract. Okay, so um here here's I guess um what maybe we should do is get both of these in the same format.
Okay.
With the same language, with the same standoff, whether that's just the superintendent or that superintendent plus school committee. Um but I I would either myself or Kathy, I just wanna follow up with the town to make sure they didn't want the town of Granby as the landlord in these contracts.
Okay.
I wonder if that for, is that for like liability insurance or something? Could it be for something like that?
Yeah, because the school department's not insured, it's the.
Is that the one for GAA that says that?
No, this is uh Immaculate Heart.
Time, yeah. Oh.
Kathy, just, I'm assuming, either you took this over, but these contracts weren't like established at the same time, right?
It doesn't say, it doesn't say it on the GAA one?
In fact, there is no description here that involves the town, right?
Okay, okay. Okay.
See, I would think it would be more on this one, where, cause you've got other towns coming in, whereas the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know? You got other towns.
I just wanna make sure that that, like, Chris doesn't want us to have the town of Granby as a landlord or something like that, but I, they should be in the same format, which we can work on doing.
Makes sense to me, but on that Immaculate Heart of Mary one, it's seventy-five kids coming in for C C.
Yeah. Well, the first, first paragraph says that, this is between the town of Granby, municipality in Hampshire County, acting through the, through its school committee referred to as the landlord. So I'm not sure, based on the sentence structure, whether the landlord is a school committee or the uh town of Granby as it is, it says here.
So the landlord is the school. I would say the school committee is considered a landlord.
The town of Granby. Yeah, probably, yeah.
Acting through a school committee, referred to as a landlord. Okay, so then at the bottom, it just must be, they, the, in
Yeah. To ask.
Again, I don't know who generated this contract.
Okay. When do we need to sign this by?
Um I think it can wait till next time.
Okay, let's just do it next time.
I can tell you when they start, yeah.
Well, it says this contract shall be for the period commencing September eighteenth through April seventh.
Okay, and the other one was saying twenty-eighth, August twenty-eighth.
The first C C D class is September sixteenth.
Well, I'm gonna, let me just assume that it'll be approved, but we're just gonna clean up the language of the contract.
Yes.
Yes.
So that, it isn't that we're declining the use of the buildings, it's just that we want to ver- we want to revise and update the contract language.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah.
Form.
So then we can vote on it tonight. Is that what you're saying?
Well, actually, he's gonna update the language.
I, I think, um, when's the next school committee meeting?
The tenth, yeah.
Then we have time, okay. In other words, we're not gonna say no, so they can arrange and do everything that they need to do to get ready, and then we can vote with appropriate, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's more just housekeeping on our end, so just, they they should be similar um
Alright.
Exactly.
format. So we'll do that.
So also going back to what you said earlier, can you just uh investigate and let us know what the other schools are doing for this type of contract?
Sure.
So we can, we used to do annual um kinda permission for the superintendent to sign on some of these contracts. We would review the contract, but you would sign off on it at the end.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know whether, I don't remember the, I I remember signing these every year, or at least one of them every year, so I don't know which one.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll see those next time.
Yep.
Uh FY eighteen budget?
Yep, so um just go into here. So we, that meeting seemed like forever ago that you, myself, and Mike had met, kinda reviewing and dissecting the FY eighteen
Yep.
um budget. Um so we're still, based on that, projecting that we are gonna have a surplus.
Okay.
Um what I did for this time, and and I think this is what you guys asked for out of that meeting, was kinda give you a snapshot of where we were this time last year compared to where we are this time this year.
Yep.
Um and that's, that's in your folder. Um this is kind of, uh, you know, the summer's a tough financial reporting period, cause there's really not much going on. Um but if you look at that memo last year, year-to-date, um we had spent twenty-two percent of the budget and this year, we're at about fourteen percent of the budget. Um most of that is um spent tuition, transportation, um salaries. There was one other big.
Instructional supplies.
The instructional supplies. This won't really mean anything, this report, and I'll give it to you, like I mentioned, the second meeting every month, until we get into the school year and the school starts spending. And then we can, I can break it down per um cost center like we, like we talked about.
Is is part of the gap due to the pay forward uh on spend?
I mean, to be honest with you, uh I'm not really sure where the, where the gap could be, um.
Well, if if there was, if there was circuit breaker money that was used to pay some of the tuition
Yes. Offset, yes. Yes, that that can play a part, yes.
Forward from two thousand eighteen, then your two thousand nineteen run rate will not be the same thing as your two thousand nineteen.
Yep, that can, that can play a, yep, part of it, yep, yep.
Yeah.
Um again, this doesn't mean much now in the, in our second meeting in September. In October, once we're into the school year, the level of detail will be better and we can actually dissect, okay, why are we spending so much year, not so much year, and and then we can have a, you know, a better discussion about it.
Okay. Okay. Um when are we closing the books on?
So eighteen, our last one was last week. Um I have to provide Chris with some uh purchase order, FY eighteen purchase orders that we're going to carry over into nineteen. And um for our, the school department, our book should be, we should have that projection number that that I keep talking about, should be pretty good. Um which goes into the audit. We still haven't heard anything back from the audit because we're waiting for FY eighteen to close, Chris to post all his uh June receipts, and then Scanlon will provide us with that final reconciliation. Um so it all, it it's a, it's a lot of things going on at the end of the, at the end of the year. Um.
So I will, based on our conversation.
Yep.
Um I will create something hopefully visual.
Mm-hmm.
Send it to you both, especially based on the numbers.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
If you can review, I would like to bring it to the school committee next time, so that we have, cause it was a pretty, pretty complicated, convoluted.
Yes, yep, yep, yep. Yes.
You know, this spent out of here, moved here, we took it out of here, new classroom, yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Right, they don't need to know all that, yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I definitely don't need to know any of that. I just want you to see it for me, yeah.
Well, actually, you do.
I just want the bottom line.
Yes.
No, no, I I would, I would, I would say that you want to know that. Not, not every single detail, but you want to know what what happened at the end of the year, where there was a gap, where there was a surplus.
Yeah.
Yes. I would like the dumbed-down version of it. Yes, agreed.
I think, I think it, that's
Agreed.
The way we articulate it to you so that it's clear.
Yes, yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hmm?
Hmm?
Talk to me like I'm a dummy, cause that's what, that's kinda what I.
Really, it's taken quite a while to get to, too. I think it was a couple of hours.
Yeah, it took a couple of hours, yeah, that's right. Multiple durations of the story, yes. Alright, anything else on the eighteen?
Yeah. Yep. Yes, yes. Uh, no, again, it was just a quick snapshot. This really doesn't carry much weight right now, um but as we get into the school year, it will.
Okay. How about nineteen?
Um so again, nineteen is, that's that, that's that comparison. We're, 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 we're close. Um
Is that run rate? Okay. Alright. Um.
I'm working with the budget that was approved for nineteen. We're going to um select board.
On the seventeenth.
On the seventeenth.
Yeah, I, you know, as soon as I sent, yeah, exactly. As soon as I sent the message, I said, oh, that's because we need to.
Now I remember what it was, I do. It's like, oh.
Yep. And they, legally, they have to, we have to go there because it's uh local contribution, a change in local contribution.
Yeah. Yeah.
So they have to appropriate that money for then you guys to allow us to spend that money. So it's just a formality.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Um that we have to go through. Um but.
Yeah, probably Kathy said, uh, the, these guys don't remember anything, but you know, I, I, as soon as I sent it, what, what is this, what are the topics? There's only probably one topic, I don't suppose.
Yeah, I know.
Yep.
Cause the support invited us for a meeting on the seventeenth of September. And uh so I said, what are the topics that we want, we're talking about?
Well, and I called Kathy and I said, Kathy, what is, well, I don't know, you asked for it, and I was like, you don't remember asking for it?
I had asked for it.
Yes, we did, we did ask for it. That's true. I didn't send the email and ask for it, yes.
Yes, I had asked for it.
And I was like, never did you ask for it?
Yes.
He asked.
So then I saw your email, I'm thinking myself, did I miss something?
So is this school committee, or is this just?
School committee going and meeting the select board, so.
Did you know about this?
It just came, it just came today.
It's ju- just, alright, so, just, yes, so this, this is, this is what it is, our, our F Y nineteen foundation budget from the state, we have our local chapter seventy eight, and then a local
Yeah, it's just happened.
contribution requirement that the town has to fund us. When the governor signed his final budget, that local contribution increased, so the town now has to give us more money.
Mm-hmm.
We have to go to the select board for them to appropriate that money to us, for us to be able to spend it.
Yes, and didn't I see something come, that came through as to the amount of that?
Yes, it was an additional it's, I don't know, I have no idea, I don't know, I just have a head.
So the whole amount that increased is local and not state?
Yep.
It's like, it's a smaller number.
Yeah, but.
Guys.
Working fifteen C C D.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Our, our state money that we get, again, ten million dollars, it's less than that, but I'm just gonna use any, a, a number.
Ground number.
Chapter seventy, which is the education, you know, funded, was five million.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Yep.
Originally, when the first draft of the budget went through, our local contribution, the state telling the town what they have to give us, was four million dollars. When the governor finally signed the budget, that portion went up to five million dollars. Because that's town money, they have to approve it.
But that's not reality, that's not the ground number, I, I, I think that's important, you know, that would
No, I'm just telling you, I, yes, no.
No.
I'm just tell, I'm just explaining to you the steps, yes, yes, I'm just using easy numbers.
That's an allegory, it's an awful.
Was it like fourteen or sixteen thousand, that's what I recall seeing?
Yes, an additional money, yes.
Okay, but let's just be clear, it was like an additional fourteen or sixteen thousand.
Yes.
Smashed potatoes, yeah.
Yes, I'm just trying to explain to you the process. Because the state, the final budget increased the local contribution that the town has to give us, the town has to approve the increase in those funds.
Okay. So they don't have a choice, they can't say no, because it's, it's coming from the governor?
Yes.
Yes, yes, it's not, it's not.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be clear, cause we're funny with money in this town. That's all.
Yep.
Gotcha, got it. So that's cool, so, so are we all, do we all need to go on the seventeen?
Alright.
I'm not going, I'm not going.
No.
Okay, I was gonna say, I.
No. No, it should be a thirty second.
Yes. Should be in the keyword, good luck with that.
Thing.
Okay.
But we can't spend that money until they say yes, okay, that's all it is, it's a formality.
Um.
Okay.
School committee goals and s- uh, school committee evaluation, I will just talk about those two at the same time, so do we?
Can we, can we just go over grants real quick?
Yeah, please do.
Sorry, just while we're on finance.
Oh, right, that was actually very good news.
Yes.
I like that memo.
Uh, so all this is, is a snapshot of last year's grants compared to, uh, F Y nineteen grants, and these are entitlement grants.
Very happy with that one.
So, this is just an allocation based grant that the state says, based on your demographics and all this data, here is your allocation for the year. Okay, so Title One, Title Two A, Title Four, um, I D E A, and the E C is the, um, it's a early childhood grant that we fund a bear professional on, and then a stipend for the program.
Early childhood. Part of.
Um, Two A is used for professional development and class size reduction, um, Title One is our, um,
Intervention.
Yeah, intervention, free and reduced kids that need that intervention, and Title Four is just another form of, um, professional development, class size reduction, it's kind of like all of it lumped into, into one. Um, we have no say on those amounts, again, it's formula based, they take our data that we submit, and they come up with that, with that number.
So they gave us an additional forty two thousand dollars overall?
They didn't give it to us, so, it's, what it's the result of is a change in our demographic, so it's an increase in students that, um, meet the criteria for, uh, poverty.
Yeah, they didn't give it.
They granted it.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
Um, and there are certain criteria, like, um, um, uh, being a, um, with D C F, um, being, um, accessing SNAP, or any federal, uh, food or assistance programs will automatically, um, enroll children and families, um, as socio-economic in need, uh, so, um, it's the result of a change in our demographic, not, I think people need to understand, you know, um, the demographics in Western Mass are changing, so increase in E L L numbers, uh, students that don't speak English,
Mm-hmm.
and an increase in students who are receiving, uh, subsidies or because of poverty.
So all this was, they didn't give us any more, we just, the data, yeah, the data yielded more money.
Earned more, yeah, it's. Yes.
So it's, it's already spoken for.
Yeah, so we, so, so based on the change in demographic, now we write the grants under that umbrella of what they're designed for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, then let me rephrase, with the exception of Title Two A, Title Two A is just, uh, professional development, so that's just, that doesn't have any tie to, um, free and reduced lunch, yes, Title One, Title Four.
I see.
Isn't, isn't that what you mentioned we would use for this?
Yes, that's class size reduction, there's a component of that grant that allows you to use, uh, part of that grant for class size reduction.
Okay.
Not the whole thing, so I just wanna be clear about that.
Okay, alright. Um, so school committee evaluation, I put a file, and I will add one more thing to it for suggestions for survey, but for what these, uh, school committee can look at for self-evaluation purposes is completely based on M A S C's, uh, suggestions. I took all those questions, converted to Excel, and then, um, uh, put everybody's initials on top of that, if you want, you can go in and update it there. The second tab on that same file is the format that we used last year when we invited the public, and they told, uh, told us what went well, what didn't work well, and what else we should be doing. Um, the third tab that I will add is based on that survey conversation that we had, if we're gonna be sending a ten question survey to the community, uh, what are, what are the suggestions? It doesn't have to be at the same time as this, we can send it separately, but I will include it in there. So the reason why I wanted to have that evaluation conversation with the goals, I was thinking that evaluation actually is a good way for us to identify the gaps, and based on those gaps, we establish some goals for us to make those improvements, and it becomes at least part of our goals, it may be something that we already have and we do it, but the gaps that we see based on the evaluation should also be worked into the goals, I'm thinking, I don't know what everybody else is thinking. Um, so for the school committee goals, I think, um, if, if we have, if we have all of our self-evaluation results by the next meeting, or before the next meeting, I can summarize those, and then I can, uh, bring those to our next meeting to establish our goals, based on, again, the, the gaps that we may highlight, uh, with that evaluation. Cause that covers everything.
So that's the self-evaluation, are you gonna use the, um, public input to in, to give feedback to the goals as well, or?
So then we have to invite the public to our next meeting, to be able to have that conversation, or it just goes to the following meeting?
Right. Right, well, I, I'm just wondering if we didn't announce, um, that was a well attended, and I thought very helpful meeting last time, um.
Yeah. When's our next meeting?
Well, it, it seems like we need to do a little bit of groundwork first ourselves, don't we, before?
Honestly, we can do all the groundwork we want, I don't know what the expected timeline is, last time we s- we thought we were getting late, if we're gonna do groundwork, it requires a little more time, I'm good either way, but, uh, we have to decide.
Well, by groundwork, I'm thinking one meeting, so I'm thinking we do, I, I just don't know if we're gonna have enough time to do all of this before the next meeting.
The next meeting is the tenth.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I was thinking more like the twenty fourth, that way.
Well, there's no reason you couldn't draft goals based on your feedback, and then hold the public meeting, and then revise goals and vote them, you could do that, because then.
Yeah, we can do that, but that's, that, that also means that the twenty fourth will be our target, not the tenth. And we invite the public to the twenty fourth, as opposed to tenth, which one would we do?
That's what I was thinking, that, cause it gives us one more meeting to go through what we all do on these evaluations, and then maybe have some more discussion around goals, and and how.
Okay.
Well, and you could actually give the community the draft goals as well, they can give you feedback on the goals.
Okay. But also, our self-evaluation can help them as well, so we'll, we'll do it that way. Okay, so the twenty fourth is public, um, by the tenth, we're gonna do our self-evaluation and
Yes, absolutely, right.
complete that part. Great, thank you.
Wait, I missed it again?
Tenth, only once. Tenth is us, uh, before the tenth, we complete that, um,
Tenth.
Self-evaluation.
self-evaluation, on the tenth, we're gonna talk about that, uh, we're gonna, we can even share the results with the public before they come to our meeting on the twenty fourth, and we're gonna ha- ask them for their input.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Superintendent evaluation, that's gonna be driven by our goals, I guess. But i- in the same way, if you have goals that you think are critical for you, then maybe next time we can talk about those as well.
Sure.
So it can be driven by two different factors, one is what we come up with, but also what you would like to, uh, take up as, as your goals for this coming year. Is, is there a, is there a timeline that we would like to look at to complete this superintendent evaluation? I re- I'm really, I'm really, because we did it s- off cycle, I, I don't know when to really jump into that, now? I will look at what the other school districts are doing, if we need to align, and with them, we align, whatever the timeline is.
Okay.
As long as it's not, you know, March.
Well, I think it's gonna be, uh, in May or June, after the school committee changes.
Oh, what?
No, we, we, we should be doing, I was thinking about the end of the year, but, uh, if it's too early, again, if it's too far off from what everybody else does, then it doesn't make sense, to me.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just teasing, because I don't think doing it around budget time is really a good time either, cause it's a, you know, this is time consuming, you know, and you wanna do it thoughtfully and
Right.
It's a little stressful.
Right. Yep. Yes. So, a- a- any questions on, on that, do you have any questions, anybody else, any questions?
I don't wanna feel rushed. No, so basically, we have to get the school committee self-evaluation to you, so that you can compile, is there?
Complete.
Yeah. You can actually do it where it is, you don't even have to send it to me, and then that would be.
Yes. It doesn't. If you need it, I had it open, I can see you guys looking at your stuff.
Yeah, I know, I see that, cause I see Jen's, some of Jen's, how she filled it out.
But what's crazy is there's, there's four sheets, I don't understand the difference.
Yeah.
I only did two, I'm Jay J and Karen did a bunch.
Yeah, Jen, Jen Karen already did it.
What?
There's four sheets that I'm looking at, and I don't understand the difference, but only one is being filled in by three people right now.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll, we'll compile.
Yeah, I.
I don't know why that happened, yeah.
I only see, I only see me and Jen Karen, I don't see anybody else.
Yeah.
I, I, I jumped out of it.
And it's the Excel spreadsheet you want us to fill our answers out in, right?
Yes. Yeah.
And is there a certain date you want this by?
Uh, if you can do it before, uh, that week before the tenth, I mean, if you give me the weekend to look at it, so I can maybe write a few things around it, that's it.
Se- before the tenth. The tenth.
So the seventh of September.
That's what I need is the date.
Yeah, seventh of September.
Okay, so you'll get it on the seventh of September?
Awesome, thank you. That, and that works, I probably will look at it for that.
So did you see my, did, did you see I'm, I'm now active on it at the top? Okay, I can see the, I can see the D and the J.
No.
Yeah, it's N.
Oh, what?
What?
Yeah, yeah, and where, do you, you just popped out.
Where, what?
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, do you have any questions on the superintendent evaluation?
Right.
Alright, um, M A S C invoice, so the select board let us know that they were not going to pay, and I think we talked about this last time, they were not going to pay the M A S C invoice from two thousand sixteen, so a little, a little history, uh, on that one.
Two thousand sixteen, one.
So for our superintendent search, we engaged M A S C, but for, with some things that they, uh, done, they have done or not done, we had questions, and we wanted to have a conversation before we went ahead and paid.
Mm-hmm.
We had the change of superintendent, and then already automatically, it, it was, uh, pushed into your first, uh, first year with us. When that was brought up, um, it was really, uh, almost towards the end of the year, and we said, oh, we're gonna have that conversation and we'll do it, and by the time we got to it, and we had our, that conversation, it was two thousand eighteen, and we had the funds already reserved for it, it was in the school committee, uh, line item, so we were ready to pay, we wrote the check, but we did not know one thing, that the state does not allow uh, payment of past, uh, invoices in a subsequent fiscal year, and if you do want to do that, which we're gonna have to, uh, it requires a town meeting approval by four fifths of the votes at the town meeting, yes.
Are you serious?
If it goes to a special town meeting, I think it's like seven eighth or nine tenth or something like that, yeah.
Well, come on, yeah, nine tenths or something, yes.
Uh, so, so we're gonna have to, I mean, we already, we, we still have the funds, we, it's, it's ready to pay, but we're doing our due diligence to be able to ask the questions and make sure that, you know, it was, it was made known we were not happy with some of the service that we had received, but we did not know that there was a legal aspect to it where we could not pay it after, you know, we're done, so now we have to go through the town meeting.
So, based on the conversation of us not being completely satisfied with the service, was, was the invoice changed?
No, it's the same invoice, no, same thing.
We just not pay the whole thing?
Yeah, we can't do that, I mean, we're, we're a member of M A S C, there was never an intent not to pay, uh, the, the invoice.
Was it a good faith conversation?
It, it was actually an email that I sent to, uh,
Um, I can, I can picture it.
So what happened if we don't get four?
I mean, uh, so what, regardless, so what is, there's a, there's a, there's an invoice for which we have the funds, and we have to go through the town meeting to ask them to allow us to pay, uh, past invoice, and
Town meeting when?
Whatever that town meeting happens, because we don't wanna really call a special town meeting just for this.
So it will probably be the September, October, where we're doing the end of year balances and any of the special or unanticipated expenses.
If there is any special town meeting that is called, we're gonna screws ourselves in, but we're not gonna call a special town meeting just for this.
Right. No. Uh, yeah, I would not think so.
No.
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 What happened if we don't get four fifths of a?
Uh, I, I'm sure there is some, some, I don't know, I mean, I.
But the transportation, we have to pay it anyways.
That's the recourse, I need a bill.
It's, yeah, it's gotta be paid.
Yeah, so. But I just wanted to let everybody know that's our M A S C invoice line. Um, for upcoming business, McDuffie and Children First, they will come in for their annual approv- uh, approval, and I, I'm sure we're gonna.
Do you want them in, or, um, so, one of two ways, they can either come in like they have been, or I can go and tour and, and let you know, okay?
No, I, I would like them to come in.
Okay, then I will have them here.
Yes.
It seemed a little frosty last year, should've gone.
It, it was frosty last year, but nothing much changed anymore.
We, we, we're sitting right here.
No, and actually, we're in a bet, we're in a much better position, and, and I do think that there's a good faith effort to
It's no. Yes.
stop recruiting.
Yeah, I, I will, I will.
At levels.
And it's, it's also a good faith effort to have them come in, considering the circumstances, and I think it's worth it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And I, I will get to where you are, and I'm usually a very, um, uh, optimistic, positive person, but I think the big driver there was their decision not to provide the financial aid that they've been providing to town residents.
Mm-hmm.
When you go to almost, uh, you know, to, uh, to, to nothing, you know, of course, people were intrigued by that, when you are now, you know, presenting your private school, uh, tuition, it, it will not be as attractive as it was before.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So, uh, with that little note, um, is there anything else that anybody, uh, wanted to bring to the next meeting that we should be aware of, aside from all that stuff that we discussed?
Cabrio.
Okay, we have our quick standing reports, I know that you have something probably longer than ours, do you have anything from the collaborative?
No, they, um, we, we have not met, but they did send out an email communication, I just have it, I just have it.
Okay, so we'll hear from the collaborator next time, we don't have anything from the West Street Building, uh, committee, um, since our, uh, last time. I have a question, there is of the, uh, can you remind us the date?
The twenty fourth?
Twenty fourth, so please make sure that it is on your calendars, the twenty fourth, because we're gonna have the official, um.
Already is.
We have confirmation that Senator Lesser, uh, will be in attendance, um, Solomon Goldstein Rose, um, as you know, is not running, um, for reelection, so he's actually in Washington,
Right.
and may, um, is hopefully gonna be back, but may not be, um, so, he's hoping to be there, um, and
Okay. How about John?
John, I don't believe I heard from his aide yet.
Okay, it would be nice to have, you know, John over there as well.
Yes, and I wanna thank Jay Joyce for reminding me, uh, to send out the, those invitations to the legislators, um, because they were not on the list, he noticed that they were not on the list, so.
Cool. Yeah, John is John Syback, and he's retiring too, so, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Um, I think that's it for standing, except for yours, all policies subcommittee, did, uh.
We met, we went through a bunch, we got, I think, three sections, four sections completed, right?
Yes.
Or reviewed, not completed, reviewed.
Um, re- yes, reviewed, um, unfortunately, this was our next meeting date, and the seventeenth is our next meeting date, so, I don't know if you need me.
Yeah, so we. Just got.
Okay. What do you think, you can bring it to the school committee for the school committee vote, because, I mean, if we can put them in place sooner than later in the school year, then all policies are in place, but if you're not ready for it, there is no, there is no forcing.
Yep. So, when they, when we're reviewing, then we need to, uh, So when they when we're reviewing, then we need to uh re-coalate, um and then they'll be presented to you for vote, um.
Okay, alright.
Do you wanna bring have us bring them in in sections, like, you know, do like we just?
Well, we can do that, I just we can be done, in fact it makes it easier because we uh it's easier to read one section rather than five sections.
Yes, for sure.
So we started with A, maybe we're.
I know, we went back to the beginning.
Right.
Yeah, when when do we start it over again?
Yeah, I know. So one last quick note before I forget, it was actually on top of my notes, but I forgot to mention it. Um our student rep, uh I don't know which would be the first good meeting to invite her, probably twenty fourth, not the tenth, since it's gonna be just the first week of school. Also arranging with the um delegates to the uh student.
Senate?
Student.
Council.
Oklahoma.
Uh student leadership.
Hatsack, student.
SIC.
Yeah.
Advocacy council or whatever that was.
Yeah. SIC or committee council.
Um if we can invite them for their regular meetings too, they can, yeah, you're not laughing, but we're trying to remember these.
No, no, no.
So so it would be great to to have that. Cool. Your superintendent report now.
Okay, um it's been a very busy uh time of year for us getting ready uh for the new school year. During our leadership team retreat, we focused on creating and expanding systems of leadership throughout the district to focus on improving student learning. Uh we are reading Learner Centered Innovation by Katie Martin, um whose vision aligns with our districts and the school committees and provides strong examples in how to get from where we are right now to where we want to be. Um we held our open house for East Meadow families and in addition, I forgot to say, we held uh the PTO, thank you for their kindergarten um meet and greet, um and I got to see the buses go by um this year, which was amazing and it didn't occur to me, I never see that because they were always out by the street, so it was really cool
Mm.
to see, not see, you see like a little bit of a hat or some hair, you know, as they're going by, 'cause they're so tiny, but um it was good to see that.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah.
Um and just in general, it's wonderful and exciting to see um teachers coming back into the schools, they are thrilled uh to be in the new building, they're certainly ecstatic to be part of a a twenty first century building, um and it's wonderful to have our community service learners um who have been painting uh and cleaning and um using tools um all summer long, um so that's a little scary, but they did well. Um and uh Aliyah has been very pleased with um their work. Um on a sad note, uh we I do have to share um with you that we have had the loss of one of our staff members, um Mr. Bryce Flowers, uh who worked in all of our schools as a substitute teacher and was going to be a paraprofessional uh with us this year in the new school year, um passed away. Uh our hearts are heavy with this news and we do keep his family and his children who are enrolled with us um in the schools in our thoughts.
Yeah. It's 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 sad and just I didn't want to jump into that before you had your report, but it was, you know, I heard it, I did not know whether, you know, it was already known, so, you know, we had that conversation, but uh Annabelle texted me and asked me if I knew if I heard and, you know, it said, uh this is so sad because he's one of those very nice people who always asks how you are, who always uh talks to you, who was always interested in your extracurriculars, theater and all that stuff, and comes and encourages you to do more of that, so uh that and in in fact she texted me again and asked me when the WIC is gonna be, uh she goes probably I can't go back and I said, yeah, probably won't be able to come back. But uh students seem to have connected very uh very closely with him, so it's a it's a sad loss. Uh our thoughts uh with with uh his his family, uh and everyone uh in the school committee. If there's anything that we can do, please let us know, anything?
That's good.
Uh I do know that there's a GoFundMe uh page uh that has been established for the family, um.
Okay, can you share that?
Uh I can, yep, um.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Yep, it's the Flowers Family Fund, I believe is how it's listed in GoFundMe.
Okay. Alright. Um. I think that that's all we had for this evening. We're gonna vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one, Part A three to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session, can we have a rule call, please?
Deanne Pangruthaus, the aye. Jennifer Bartos, aye.
Amira Van, aye.
Michael, aye.
Thank you, have a good evening.